All items on the agenda will be open for public comments before final action is taken. When you speak, clearly state your name for the record and be aware there is a three-minute time limit per speaker. Keep in mind that the chairman has a discretion of limiting the total discussion time on any item. Please place all cell phones in silent mode. If you are hearing impaired, we have listening devices available. Thank you for your participation and cooperation.
Thank you. Next is our consent agenda. This is a list of items that are intended to be all considered in one motion, but we're happy to pull anything if there's an interest in doing so. Jennifer?
There we go. I would actually like to pull 7A, the Agricultural Marketing Services Consulting Services Agreement. I think this is a fabulous thing, and I was sorry to see it hidden in consent, so I really want to take the opportunity to highlight this because I think it's a great thing for agriculture in Placer County.
Thanks. So Josh, are you going to kick that off for us? Oh, well, finish up with the rest here. Any others?
I don't have any others.
I'm sorry. Anyone else from the public like to pull a different item? Seen none. What's the pleasure of the board?
Moved in second.
Moved in second and to approve consent. Roll call, please.
Holmes?
Yes.
Duran?
Yes.
Euler?
Hi.
Montgomery?
Yes.
Wiegand?
Yes.
We will now take up item 7A. Morning, Josh.
Good morning, board. Josh Hunsinger, Placer County Agricultural Commissioner. Item 7A is an one-year contract with the Placer Grown Nonprofit Organization to take over the agricultural marketing program for the county. This is a longstanding program that has been in place in several different iterations for the past approximately fifteen years. And so what we're asking you to do to is approve a contract with Placer Grown that would revitalize the program, move it away from just a social media, online, and PR-type program, which was the past practice over the last four years, and move it to kind of revitalize back to its roots as a more on-the-ground focus, focus on specific activities within the community, still retain a strong, robust portion that would be social media and PR and website development, but at the same time revitalize that on-the-ground presence in the community through events, through outreach, participation in different things within the community. So be happy to answer any specific questions, but I'm very excited about this contract and would anticipate coming back to your board in the very near future with a more robust presentation of some of the plans we have for the next year.
Thanks, Josh.
Yeah, and I just want to say thank you. I was really, I was pleasantly surprised Wednesday night when the agenda was released to see this, but as I say, I was sad that it was on consent because I really think this is a great story, the idea of actually bringing this marketing vision back to Placer Grown, which is absolutely the group that has the context, has the knowledge, has the local expertise and experience. And so I thank you for indulging me in taking this off consent. I just think it's such a great story. I truly didn't want it to be missed.
And we had some time constraints, it being the middle of harvest season, just to get this in place as quickly as possible, but as I said, I do anticipate in the very near future bringing back a more complete presentation to your board to highlight some of the plans we have for the upcoming year.
Great. Excellent. If there's no other comment, I would move approval.
Moved in second and to approve the contract just discussed. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, we will now take up our first department item, which is the minutes of the June 7th meeting because, oh, I'm sorry. Way ahead of myself today. Next is public comment. This is the time when anyone from the public can address something that is not on the agenda, keeping in mind we can take no action. Anyone from the public? Seen none? I'll close that and move on to committee reports by board members. Anyone?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I have a report.
Jim?
Are you with me?
Yep, I am now.
Okay. I just wanted to report that Sunday afternoon and all day yesterday, I was down in Long Beach at the National Association of Counties meeting. There was at least one staff member there, Joel Joyce, he's probably off today. Anyhow, the good news is that we were able to elect Greg Cox, San Diego County Supervisor, as second vice president of NACO, and in the next couple of years, he will be the president of NACO. So California counties will have a strong voice on the national level. So I just wanted to report that, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Jim. Anyone else have any committee reports? Seen none? We will now move on to our first department item, which is the approval of minutes from the June 7, 2016 meeting where somebody was off fishing and goofing around, so we have to bring that back. Moved in second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And I will abstain because I was the guy goofing around. We'll next take up Indigent Defense Services Contract, item 5A. Okay, we will take up that item now and be presented by David Bosch.
Do I have a microphone? Good morning. I apologize for having to substitute here. This item is on page 75 of your board report. You'll recall that this was before your board previously for direction. We now bring that back for your consideration. The two actions requested are to approve and authorize the county executive officer to conclude negotiations and sign a four-year contract commencing August 1 of this year and concluding June 30, 2020, in a negotiated amount of $23,962,500 with the law office of Dan Koke for primary indigent services on terms consistent with those contained in the draft agreement. And then, secondly, to provide staff direction on the continuing evaluation of service model options, including the potential development of a county office of the public defender for indigent defense services. As outlined in your board report, this was last considered by your board on June 21, where you received an update on the request for qualifications process that was undertaken. And at that time, we provided to your board a range of options for consideration. So we're now back seeking contract authorization as outlined and happy to answer any questions in terms of the work that's been done since your last consideration of this item.
Thanks, David. Any questions or comments by board members at this point?
I did have one comment. I did have the opportunity to meet with Mr. Chuma's office, and they did ask that, as I often do, that I put forward the suggestion, if we do approve this contract with Mr. Koke's office, that they take a look at the current employees under the contract and see if there are any that would be appropriate to roll into this new contract, but obviously under new management. And I did indicate that I would be happy to bring that suggestion forward. So while I am going to be supporting this change to the contract model today, I just would suggest to Mr. Koke's office that they take a look at some of the existing staff and see if there are any who would be appropriate to bring onboard. Additionally, I would strongly encourage that we do continue to evaluate all potential service models out there, now that we're not under, or again, if the board approves this contract, if we're then not under the gun, to make a decision in a precipitous fashion, but to say, you know, what do other models look like? What would be the cost-benefit analysis to the county, you know, and bring that back for future discussion, understanding that we may well continue with the contract model that we have now. So those are my comments.
And Jack?
Yeah, my comments are parallel to Supervisor Montgomery's in that I don't think that in government, there's really any sacred cows here when it comes to looking at service models. So while I don't have any data to make a determination before me today with regards to whether or not, you know, we go to this model or that model, I think that we should always be of the opinion of trying to figure out the best value for providing those services, and whether it's new contract or whether it's moving to a department with a public defender, that's a question for a later day, but I will be supporting this arrangement. Thank you.
See another question or comments from my colleagues at this time? Is there anyone from the public who'd like to address this item? If so, please come forward, state your name. Seen none, I'll bring it back to the board for action. Been moved in seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We'll now take up our 9:15 timed item, which is Sheriff's Office Jail Booking, Jail Access, and Incarceration Fees. Mark?
Morning, Chairman Wiegand, members of the board, Mr. Bosch, Mark Jacoby, Placer County Sheriff's Office. May this morning request you to conduct a public hearing to adopt an ordinance to amend the Sheriff's Office Jail Access Fees, Incarceration Fees, and Booking Fees. That's all I've got unless you have questions.
Any questions or comments at this time?
I think it might be useful, just for the public record, to indicate where there were increases and where there might have been decreases or where things might have stayed the same.
Absolutely. The study was conducted by MGT of America. The jail access fees in 2016, '17 will both be $504,000, excuse me, $504, an increase of $45 from '15, '16. The incarceration fees are $85 and $134 respectively for minimum security in main jail versus $105 and $143 from the previous year.
There's some increases and some decreases.
Some increases, some decreases, yes, ma'am. They're all based on actual costs from two years prior.
Understood. Thank you.
Jack?
Yeah, and this is a biannual analysis that we-
It's actually annually that we do it. The requirement to go annually has gone away from the jail, the actual jail, daily jail rate. The state no longer controls that, but the requirement to update these fees annually still exists, so we'll be back every year.
No, I just wanted to make sure the public understood that we're not just raising fees for the sake of raisin' them.
Absolutely.
You know, this is something that we have to do on an annual basis. Thank you.
Sure.
Is there anyone from the public who'd like to address this item? Seen none, I'll bring it back to the board, excuse me, for action. Moved in seconded, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. So at this time, we're going to adjourn into closed session. We want to leave adequate time for our capital facilities workshop, so rather than chop that up and with the chunk of time we have, let's go into closed session. Jerry?
The board will now adjourn to closed session to have a conference with legal counsel to discuss one item of anticipated litigation.
Closed session, and Jerry, would you report off for us, please?
The board had a conference with legal counsel in closed session, heard a report on the anticipated litigation, the initiated litigation in one potential case, and the board gave direction to counsel. That was the only matter heard, no action was taken.
Excuse me, the statewide community infrastructure program. Michelle? Are you on?
No. There it is.
There we go. Good morning.
Good morning. Michelle Kingsbury with the county executive office. The item before you today is to request your approval to participate in the statewide community infrastructure program, which we commonly refer to as SKEP. We have James Hamel, who is from the SKEP program that is here today as well, to answer any questions that you may have about the program specifics. I'll provide a general overview and kind of some timeline regarding how staff has vetted the program internally for your information. So what is SKEP? It's a, it's a, it's a program offered through the California Statewide Community Development Association, which is a JPA comprised of the League of California Cities and the county association of which Placer County is a member. However, in order to participate in the SKEP program, you must adopt a resolution of participation, which is included within your package today for your consideration. SKEP pools tax-exempt bond financing for both residential and non-residential development utilizing the 191315 Assessment Bond Act, which is a little bit different than Melrose Bonds, requires some findings of public benefit, et cetera. They're limited obligation bonds in which no way would the local agency or Placer County be responsible if those bonds did default. It would be the obligation of the property owner. The bonds are issued through the SKEP program and CSCDA, and they're 30-year tax-exempt bonds for these types of projects. As I mentioned, the types of projects that are eligible for SKEP financing include residential, typically smaller residential projects, and both commercial, industrial, retail projects that might not otherwise utilize bond financing. There's a couple different programs that SKEP offers, including both infrastructure and fee programs that I'll go into a little bit more in depth in the next slide. So for the infrastructure, or excuse me, the fee program, there's two different types of fee programs that the SKEP program finances through these assessment bonds, one being if a developer pays the fees upfront and then seeks reimbursement, or if the developer, as a condition of approval, pools the fees, they can pay those all upfront and finance them through the SKEP program, which is part of the advantages for local jurisdictions to participate in the SKEP program, is you have the opportunity to get more of your fee revenue upfront versus waiting over time for residential development to go kind of building permit at a time. And on the infrastructure side, typical public improvements such as roads, sewer, water, drainage, those types of improvements are eligible under the SKEP program for this type of financing mechanism. Our local jurisdictions, such as Roseville, Rockland, and Lincoln, also participate currently in the SKEP program. I believe in Roseville, I'll look at James, but Topgolf recently utilized the SKEP program down in Roseville for the non-residential commercial project where you see the, I think it's a three-story golf complex, utilized this program. It is a voluntary program for developers to participate in if they want to utilize this type of financing, which certainly for smaller residential projects, which couldn't otherwise afford the cost of issuance for a standalone either assessment district or Melrose Bond District, is very advantageous for them, as well as the commercial projects that might not otherwise utilize this type of bond financing. In 2014, we did receive a letter from the BIA in support of the Placer County participating in the SKEP program, and since that time, starting in 2014, really where development activity began to pick up, our bond screening committee heard several presentations from developers encouraging Placer County to participate in the program. And we took a process, going and vetting through all the documents and the program, and kind of weighing basically, can the county do this program on their own, or would it be more advantageous to utilize a program that's in existence, is familiar from our development community, and also our local jurisdictions participate in. We have a project that's currently vetting in Granite Bay that kind of boiled up to the most current active project that if your board so chooses to adopt this program, would probably be our first applicant coming in. In earnest, back in 26, excuse me, quite a bit, a discussion ensued in 2016 at Bond Screening Committee, which is our committee, subject to the Brown Act, which vets our land to secure debt financing, applications for both CFD districts, Melrose districts, as well as assessment districts. It's comprised of our treasurer, tax collector, auditor, assessor, as well as several department heads and representatives from our CEO's office. We've vetted this program quite a bit, looking at the pros and cons, and how best to, under our existing bond screening rules and procedures, how this program might fit into our process that we utilize here in vetting land-secured debt financing, really focusing on a couple of areas where Bond Screening Committee really wanted to make sure from a property burden or tax burden, when we look at how much each property is carrying in terms of the assessment and tax value, making sure this program wouldn't overburden a property. So we've come up with a certain set of criteria, utilizing our Bond Screening Committee as the vetting committee for any applications that may come in under the SKEP program, making sure that they don't overburden the properties. We're looking at at most about a 1.8% combined assessment tax burden on the property, making sure that we leave some room for school bonds or other types of bonds that may come in, as well as looking for the types of projects that provide for some type of public benefit consistent with our rules and procedures that we have now. So for instance, if they are oversizing a sewer pipe that might benefit other types of projects, things like that, we want to make sure we're looking at good projects to support for this program, consistent with what we would look at if we were doing the debt financing on our own. And so we've developed this criteria, as noted in your package as well, attached to the resolution. I think your second resolution is an addendum to the Bond Screening Committee Rules and Procedures that has a specific chapter that would be for the SKEP program, the type of criteria we would be looking at evaluating when we get an application in. We're also proposing to delegate authority to the county executive officer to sign, subject to the vetting through the Bond Screening Committee, if we find a good application that we want to support through this program, allowing them to sign the application as part of the criteria for the SKEP program, that the local jurisdiction sign the application, that they would then take on the burden of doing all the levies, conducting the public hearings, et cetera, for this type of program. So looking for more of a streamlined process that we can get these applications in and processed, and through our Bond Screening Committee, which meet monthly within about a 30-day time period, assuming the applications are complete and ones that we could support. We're also looking for full cost recovery of this program for staff time costs. We do have to go through and vet the applications, bring them forward to the Bond Screening Committee, and so we're looking at taking in a deposit to cover our costs. And at the bond issuance, we're looking to get a point and a half that would cover our costs, and it wouldn't be a double dipping. Certainly, we'd credit any deposits that would come in, and making sure that we have full cost recovery, as we're looking to have to do inspections for the public improvements, also some administrative parts that would come in, subject to subsequent to the program or the bonds being issued, where we would have to notify SKEP of any changes in ownership, conditions of approval, when maps are filed, et cetera. So there is some staff time costs associated with this program. I know I'm going quickly.
Mr. Chairman, before the slide changes, quick question on this slide. You might have mentioned it, but on the bullet point that speaks to the committee reviewing a recommendation on all, or to provide a recommendation, excuse me, on all projects that propose to exceed 1.8% property tax burden, is that cumulative? Is that 1.8% when you include the 1% straight, so it's not, it's not a cumulative of 2.8?
It's aggregate 1.8, including the 1%, so it's a total burden.
Okay.
Right. And really, the goal is to make sure there's some, there's room always left in case school bonds or other types of bonds are out there so that we don't max tax.
Okay.
And it's consistent with our existing rules.
All right, thank you.
With that, that concludes most of my presentation. Again, it's a program that is supported within the development community. It's an existing program that the developers were quite familiar with, as other folks that may have worked largely in cities. We're looking to keep this as a streamlined process, but also add it as a tool for smaller projects that may not otherwise seek the types of bond financing or couldn't afford the cost of issuance, and providing it for kind of an economic driver and supporting of our development community. And no, in vetting through the program, the county is not liable for defaults. We're not going to be the parties collecting on that. It'd be the SKEP program, and certainly James could have some more technical detail on that. They're limited obligation bonds, and the program, you know, the Bond Screening Committee vetted it and thought it would be an excellent opportunity to just provide another tool in the toolbox for developers to utilize as they're proceeding forward and looking at financing infrastructure and fees. With that, I think my final slide does require a-
I think Jack has a question or comment right now.
Sure.
Yeah, anytime you say the word delegation, that kind of gives me the creeps. Can you kind of explain what the process is? I mean, you know, we deal with it here, but in this particular issue, just kind of explain what exactly is going on.
Sure. We have the existing Bond Screening Committee, which is a committee that's subject to the Brown Act at the county. We meet on a monthly basis. Their goal, or their charge, is to review land-secured debt financing requests. So for instance, in our specific plan areas where developers may want to form a Melrose District or CFD to finance their infrastructure costs, those requests get vetted through our Bond Screening Committee. And as I mentioned, it's comprised of kind of our finance, core finance group and assessor that review those applications against certain criteria. We looked for lean-to-values, the tax rates, making sure there's some form of public benefit. So it's an existing committee. In terms of streamlining, it was utilizing kind of the framework that is already there. They're quite adept and very smart and intuitive folks that understand these types of financing mechanisms. So when SKEP does get an application in, they forward it to us. We would be reviewing it just against these criteria, utilizing that committee, whose charge is already to review land-secured debt financing applications, and making sure it's consistent with our existing rules and procedures. And then we are required, if we're supportive of an application, to sign the application and move it back to the SKEP offices for their final processing, and we're looking to utilize the county executive officer to be the one that signs those applications.
Okay, and I would think, and this is no jab at David, but I think a smart CEO would make sure that the board is informed about the delegation, correct?
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much.
Sure.
So, did you have more?
That concludes my presentation. It's a pretty straightforward program. It's largely consistent with what we currently do as staff, when we get particularly the Melrose Act requests in, but it's an existing program that statewide provides for these economies of scale, that projects that may not otherwise be able to afford these types of debt financing mechanisms now have an opportunity to. And since we've had, received several requests from the development community, we've vetted it through our Bond Screening Committee, who does recommend for your consideration to approve participation in the program.
Thanks, Michelle. Any other questions or comments from my colleagues at this time? So this is a public hearing, and with that, I'll open this item up to the public. Please come forward and state your name for the record if you wish to address the board. Seen none, I will close the public hearing, bring it back to the board to adopt a resolution, authorizing the county to join the program, and adopt a resolution approving the changes to the Bond Screening Committee rules.
I will move approval of that, but before saying so, I would just like to comment that I think that any time that we have the opportunity to utilize resources that are pooled, that minimizes the risk and the cost on folks here that in good faith want to develop their property, that we need to not only look at it in good faith, but at the same time, take advantage of it when the opportunity is a good one. And I don't really see a downside here if there's no liability to the county to participate in this, in this project, nor do we have to run around collecting fees from developers, you know, when things go sideways. So I think, I feel comfortable stepping forward on this, so, thank you.
We have a motion, is there a second? Moved in seconded to approve the resolutions just discussed, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Michelle. Okay, we're now going to jump to item 5B, the Capital Facilities Financing Plan, and Andy's going to kick that off, but then we are going to break to our 10 o'clock timed item after Andy gives his presentation. Just so everybody knows how that's going to be truncated, be a nice break for us so we can take up the 10 o'clock item at about its right time. So Andy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Andy Heath with the county executive office. What we'd like to do today is actually have a workshop discussing the Capital Facilities Financing Plan. As part of this workshop, we'll be asking you to receive a status update on the 2011 Capital Facilities Financing Plan projects, which was the last time the Capital Facilities Plan came to your board. We'll ask you to affirm the recommended updated approach to capital project prioritization, where we will be looking at bridging the 2011- where we will be looking at bridging the 2011 plan into a new 2016 format with a different set of prioritization criteria, not too different, but a couple of things are different. And then actually have a workshop where we'll discuss a set of capital projects that are in one specific tier, tier two, and getting your board's affirmation on moving forward with these projects in particular, in addition to any other projects that your board sees in the plan itself out of the 27 as we prepare for the 2016 capital projects, capital facilities financing plan, to come back with the final budget in September. As part of the workshop, I'll give you a history of the capital planning and prioritization process. We'll look at the capital facilities financing plan in general, updating it from 2011 to 2016, and some of the things that have been considered as part of that update process. Well, we'll look specifically at the multi-year capital plan, emerging priorities and challenges and choices which your board has considered for the last two fiscal years as part of the budget process. We'll reconcile the 2011 projects into 2016. And then we'll have a conversation about the updated tier criteria definitions and the funding sources that will be considered with the new plan for 2016 as it is extremely broad, more broad than has been considered before. The workshop will then segue into a tier two project discussion where myself, Becky Rigan, Michelle Kingsbury, and Jennifer Merchant will give you an overview of projects specific to our particular areas in tier two. And then with all that information, we'll ask your board for affirmation, any feedback that you would have for us so that we can begin to prepare the plan for 2016. Looking specifically at the history of the capital facilities financing plan, the comprehensive map, facilities master plan was first approved by your board in 1993. This comprehensive master plan essentially outlined all of the space needs based on population growth, based on staffing growth, and based on programmatic needs associated with growth in the county of Placer. The plan itself actually went through and discussed needs for certain buildings, capital facilities, if you may, for the future based on that growth. Subsequent to that, the capital facilities impact fees were put in place in Placer County in 1996, first by the county, the unincorporated county as a whole, and then subsequently the cities, each of the incorporated cities actually also adopted the capital facilities impact fees. These capital facilities impact fees are AB 1600 fees. They're mitigation fees, impact fees, that are required to be used for, specifically for growth in the county and for capital facilities as they are dedicated. So those fees are currently in place right now. Capital facilities plan was, was last updated in 2011. There have been several iterations of the capital facilities financing plan that have come back to your board in, at different times in the past. Last time, however, was in 2011. And what this plan basically does is it outlines the priorities based on defined tier criteria for the undertaking of specifically capital facilities as defined in the capital facilities financing plan. It outlined a 10-year overview of when these projects were estimated to be built, and then also looked at the future for certain projects that had a horizon beyond 10 years that, but needed to be noted to be considered as part of the prioritization process as your board moved forward. The plan also delineated available funding. So it talked about the amount of capital facilities fees that were available, with the understanding that the capital facilities fees themselves were likely never enough to undertake all of the projects that were delineated in the plan itself. As such, the plan also included other fees and general fund discretionary revenue sources. It included tobacco securitization money that came in that your board has used in the past, and any other funding sources that were applicable to the building of any capital facilities, federal and state monies, grants, such that were specific and for specific purposes. So again, this plan last came to your board in 2011, and part of the process today is to actually update this plan into 2016 and not just look at the capital facilities, but look at capital as a whole, with the recognizing that capital facilities are but one component of capital in general, and all capital is essentially funded with some level of discretionary general fund revenue to some extent, similar to other priorities outside of capital that your board considers. So we will be looking at the multi-year capital plan as well. Your board may recall that the multi-year capital plan first came two fiscal years ago, where we presented this document, which is a comprehensive listing of all capital projects in the county that are delineated in the budget, in the capital projects fund, in the road fund, and any other fund that has one-off capital projects, similar to maybe a PAS replacement project that may be covered by a telecommunications fund. All of these projects are in this document and they are presented as a group of projects that has come to your board. So your board has been aware of all of the capital that is on top for the coming fiscal year. Similarly, for the last two fiscal years, including the recent proposed budget that was adopted by your board in June, we've brought back to your board something that we're doing called emerging priorities and challenges and choices, where we've recognized that there are several priorities that your board is keenly interested in and in funding them moving forward. Amongst these challenges and choices are capital priorities and some of the funding for capital activities as we move forward, and then you have other challenges and choices as well. So I have a slide specific to that to remind you of what some of those things were. And then just the updated capital facilities financing plan that's pending in 2016. Basically, what we will do is take the things that were considered as part of the last time this came to your board in 2011. We'll look at the multi-year capital plan in all the projects that are in there, and then we've taken those projects and have really gone back and looked at some of those projects that are more prevalent today, some of the projects that are resonating with your board and/or with the community and/or with staff to update those projects and place them in tiers for, for your consideration today. We'll also be looking at the, the funding sources as well to determine exactly what funding is available. So we'll have some information on that. So that's kind of the history of the capital financing plan and how it's evolved into something much more, where we're considering more than just the capital facilities themselves in the financing, but more so all capital projects and all the funding sources that go with them, commensurate with other priorities in the county. Capital facilities financing plan again prioritizes capital projects through the tier system, uses tiers one through five, where tier one means that a significant funding commitment has already been dedicated to the project or it's underway. When you look at the 2011 plan, you'll see that a lot of the things that were in tier one were actually well underway at the time. The project was likely to be finished soon. Tier two is where a specific policy direction may have been provided, but perhaps funding wasn't fully identified for that project itself. This is where you'll see the change when we bridge from 2011 to 2016, and when we get to the 2016 redefined tiers, inform your board what that looks like. Tier three are projects anticipated to follow tier one and tier two projects, so once the tier one projects are completed, and once the tier two projects are, have that concrete policy direction and have been fully funded, tier three projects will move themselves up and they're defined as those types of projects. Tier four is smaller projects, things like road maintenance or smaller one-off capital projects that need to be considered merely because they demand a, a portion of discretionary funding and need to be considered as part of the plan. But tier four is just a recurring amount of capital that is funded each year. Your board may recall that on an annual basis, each budget does consider $4.5 million in capital funding from the discretionary, from general fund as a discretionary source, and $3.8 million towards the road fund. So about $8.3 million year after year has been dedicated as part of this tier four effort. And then in tier five, these are facilities that are in the capital improvement plan, however, have a longer time horizon for, for completion. But again, just making sure they're on a plan and recognizing that at some point in time in the near future, based on growth, these projects will likely be needed. Moving on to the multi-year capital plan, this is the plan that came to your board two fiscal years ago. With the final budget this year, we plan on updating this plan into, for the third year. And again, this is a comprehensive countywide capital project approach that was established by the infrastructure investment committee. We actually went back and worked with all departments to create this plan initially, create a one-pager for each one of the projects that are delineated in this plan. So within the plan, you'll see what the estimated cost for a particular project might be. You'll see the time horizon for a particular project, and then you'll see a priority where a priority has been, has been provided to the project itself. In many cases, these priorities have been determined in a high, medium, or low ranking based on six criteria that help rank this project specifically. Economic development and the project's contribution to economic development is considered as part of the ranking, about 30% there. Service improvements and a cost to quality ratio, 25%. Regulations, statutory or legal requirements, opportunity costs, risk avoidance, 15%. How the project contributes to the quality of life for residents in Placer County is also considered in the project ranking, as are leveraging an opportunity for the project, and then the timeliness, deliverability, and any other considerations that we may look at in terms of ranking the project. So most of the projects that are in this book here, at least the major projects, are ranked using this criteria. This criteria will be used to begin to bridge to the 2016 capital facilities financing plan, where we're looking at things a little bit more comprehensively in terms of where we're ranking them, as we recommend undertaking these projects before your board. And then also the multi-year capital plan, what it also does is it has a comprehensive listing of eligible and available capital funding sources. So the full array of funding that's available, either one-time funding or an ongoing funding source, is delineated in a schedule in this plan. This is the challenges and choices. You may recall seeing this chart as part of the proposed budget development process this year. What this challenges and choices does is we came back to your board for the last two years and we're presenting before you some of the things that are being asked for by departments and/or considered from a policy perspective as funding alternatives for one-time and/or ongoing discretionary general fund funding. Most of the things that you see on here, I think there are 11 of them, actually have a demand on general fund funding, which is limited. Amongst these challenges and choices in this chart is the capital facilities financing plan and being able to give money or provide money towards capital and infrastructure development as a discretionary revenue source. So you can see capital is but one of many demands, presents one of many demands on discretionary general fund money and needs to be considered in the spectrum of all things that are priorities in the county. Bridging the gap. What this, what this chart does is it actually goes through and begins to bridge the gap between the reconciling of the 2011 capital facilities financing plan to 2016. In other words, which projects were, were going on in 2011 that were moving over into 2016, and for those that are not moving over, what has changed. So the far left-hand column describes the 2011 projects. The middle column describes the status of that project as of today and what's happened with that. And then the, the far right-hand column describes which projects have moved over into the 2016 plan. Of the 18 projects in the 2011 plan, six have been completed, combined with other projects or nearly complete, projects like the South Placer Adult Correctional Facility, the Animal Shelter, Customs House, and other various smaller projects. That's the tier four projects that continues to move forward. Two are delayed related to the Tahoe Justice Center, where they're, we're working with the state to wait for state funding on, on those. So those are delayed from the 2011 plan. Five are currently on hold, and this is the Forest Hill Library Project, the building of the library, as the site has already been selected, but the building of it has not taken place. Auburn Jail renovation, the DA probation complex, and adult detention phase two are all in a on-hold mode. One is currently active right now, which is a warehouse and archives for the county clerk recorder. One is annual ongoing. That's a miscellaneous facilities capital projects. One is to be removed based on a, a policy decision moving forward, and that's CHHS Clinic and Lab. And two have progressed to higher tiers, which are the HHS Office Building and the Administration Center, which will likely become part of the Placer County Government Center Master Plan that will come back to your board in the near future. So this is how we reconcile the 2016 plan into 2011 and those projects that remain from 2011 in the 2016 considered projects. Bridging the gap, this is how we're looking at the redefined tiers. And what I've done here is we've tried to go back and look at how can we simply define exactly what's going on in the redefined tiers. So tier one is simply defined as go. These are projects that are fair, fairly ready to go. They have a funding source dedicated to them, or once the project starts getting underway because of its priority, will have a funding source attached to them as we move forward. In tier two, this is the analyze stage, and this is where the, the biggest change to the definitions of the tiers have occurred. Projects in the analyze, analyze stage require immediate attention through policy discussion and pending further analysis. Analysis such as looking at the funding sources and the full array of funding sources that may be attributable to undertaking a tier two project, looking at programmatic impacts and how the, the project itself and the undertaking of that project impacts the ability to deliver services in the community through the programs that we provide. Long-term cost implications. Many of the projects in tier two are, are increases in programs or additional programs as such, and ultimately will have a, a higher or an added ongoing cost component attached to them that will need to be considered, that will need to be funded in some way, shape, or form. Operational efficiencies. Some of the projects in tier two also provide a significant ROI through create, creation of operational efficiencies. Projects like the, potentially the PAS or Financial System Replacement Project presents a considerable amount of, of operational efficiencies that may be, that may result as a result of doing that project. That needs to be analyzed further to determine exactly what that is before putting this project in a go state. Agency partnerships. Some of these projects stand to benefit by coordinating with other jurisdictions potentially, whether it's other counties, other cities, or other agencies in terms of being able to work with them and have them also provide a funding source or assist with a resource capacity to undertake the project and, and more importantly, operate the project in an ongoing manner. And then policy development. Some of the projects may stand to benefit from a change in consideration of policy, where we're looking at some of the development-related projects that may be on the plan itself, and whether or not to take, for example, the former redevelopment tax increment that is now being characterized as property tax as the dissolved redevelopment winds down and county gets more property tax, but keeping the characterization of that former redevelopment tax increment as, as such, and using that for, for future capital or future development-related projects as it would have been used for in the redevelopment area. So consideration of a policy like that before we move forward. So all of these things are, are, are being looked at in tier two, and we will be analyzing these things further for each one of the projects where it's needed before we actually move these to tier one. This is where we're going to be presenting these projects in tier two to your board today. These are the projects that you will hear about, and these are the projects that we are seeking affirmation on, that these are the right projects in tier two, and that we can work forward, look forward to, to spend a considerable amount of resources that will be required to complete the analysis process, to actually begin funding and undertaking these projects as a whole. Tier three is in the wings. Again, more analysis is needed, and tier three projects may not be ranked as high as tier two projects for that purpose, for just, there's just considerable amount, amount more analysis needed. And then the funding, the funding may be in question as well, and how we're going to look to fund certain projects in tier three. Tier four, the definition of that remains unchanged. These are just the annual ongoing maintenance type projects that we'll continue to include as part of the plan. And then tier five also remains unchanged. These are future on-ramp projects that we recognize at some point in time will need to be done and completed, but we just haven't, haven't started those yet, and there's no roadmap to start those anytime soon. Bridging the gap, just continuing on reconciling 2011 to 2016. What this slide does is it just demonstrates for your board all of the types of revenue sources that can be considered or, and will be considered as part of the new plan. You can see first and foremost, you have discretionary general fund money. Then you have capital facilities impact fees, recognizing that county does receive capital facilities impact fees, and we need to demonstrate a means by which, how they will be spent over time. Capital reserves, the eastern slope transient occup. Capital reserves, the Eastern Slope Transient Occupancy Tax, the TOT, state and federal revenue, debt financing, lease-to-purchase, where in, in most cases, to the extent any debt is, is secured for the undertaking of a capital project and the building of something, most likely that debt service will be a burden of the general fund. The general fund typically pays for debt service for capital facilities. Redevelopment Property Tax Trust Fund, I just talked about that. Any other county trust funds, like Clerk Recorder Trust Funds for the, potentially for the, the warehouse project. Advances from other county funds, tobacco securitization, there may be some leverageability there in the future for additional funds to come from that source. Partnering agencies, partnering agencies is huge, and the ability to work with other agencies to garner funding from them for the undertaking of perhaps a multi-jurisdictional capital project development, and developer contributions, and then any other types of fees. I just wanted to call out specifically, in the, in the available monies today, in the capital facilities fee itself, there's about $26.8 million that is available for allocation to projects, and the Capital Projects Trust Fund, about $11.8 million, and this is not allocated money. And then in the general fund capital reserve, about $43.7 million. So, there's about just over $82 million that is available for consideration as we begin to fund these projects and build out the, what the 2016 plan looks like in the long term. And then keep, keeping in mind also that each year the county does collect additional fees from capital facilities impact fees, it also does put more money into the capital projects to the extent your board approves a allocation of discretionary revenue and continues to fund the things that needed, need to be completed.
Andy?
Yes.
Why don't we break here?
Okay.
Because we're a little bit, pretty good time proximity for the ten o'clock timed item, and it's a pretty good break spot, I think. But while this is all under mine, are there any questions or comments at this time from colleagues?
I just want one clarification, if I could. You seem to indicate in your comments, Andy, that we're going to be asked today to approve certain specific projects within the tiering. My understanding of what we were being asked today was to approve the approach, which is a tiering system. I just want to make it very clear that we're not going to say today, yes, these are the two, tier-two projects, these are the tier-three projects, because as, as you know from our discussions, I have some concerns about what's in tier-two versus tier-three.
Right. Yeah, today is just to get feedback on the approach, and that ultimately what we will be bringing back will look something like this, and if there is a project that is of noteworthy importance, or that needs to be moved between tiers, to the extent we can have that information, you know, we would move forward with that information and, and re, relook at the way we are tiering these things based on the comments received from your board. But yeah, it's to confirm the approach, and the approach we've taken to actually develop the, this table here, which is, which is the projects, the twenty-seven projects that will be on the plan. All of these projects will be on the plan, where they're at may be massaged.
Okay, and, and I, I will have additional comments on this. I mean, I think there are some things that probably shouldn't be on the plan, like the operational, ongoing operations stuff should probably not be part of this. It should have its own budget line for ongoing maintenance and operations, that's very different than infrastructure development in my mind, and so I think there's some conversations that we need to have around that. And just as a heads up, I do have concerns about the criteria and how they were established, and how they are weighted with individual projects, but we will get to that later.
And Jack?
And we're going to have those discussions about where things go as a board, right?
I'm sorry?
So, we're going to have those discussions about what, what project fits in what?
Right.
As a board. It's not going to happen before we get it, correct?
Right.
Okay, all right.
Okay, with that, then, we will take a break on this item. Give us plenty of time to have a full thorough discussion, but allow us to jump to our ten o'clock item, human resources. It's an appeal by the Placer Corrections and Probation Officers Association as to the consideration of the hearing officers, hearing officers' decision on the Placer Correction and Probation Officers Association, Appeal of the County Employee Relation Officer's Determination that the proposed unit was not an appropriate unit. With that, Lori is going to kick this off and frame it for us.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning, members of the board. This morning, the matter of the request by the Placer Corrections-
Lori? Your microphone's not on.
Now, I think you can hear me better.
Thanks.
Good morning, and thank you. The matter of the request by the Placer Correction and Probation Officers Association, PCPOA, to be recognized as a bargaining unit, is presented to your board for your consideration and action. I'd like to take a moment just to briefly provide a history and then outline the items that require your board's action, including a description of the process for today's presentation, and certainly invite county council to provide any clarification as well. In terms of background, on February 6th, 2015, PCPOA submitted to the county petitions seeking to sever the deputy probation officers from the professional bargaining unit, and the correctional officers from the general bargaining unit, and a position, a petition for recognition of a new and separate bargaining unit consisting of the deputy probation officer and correctional officer classifications. On May 1st, 2015, the county employee relations officer issued the county's initial written response and determined that the proposed unit of deputy probation officers and correctional officers was not an appropriate unit. Following a meeting with the ERO, wherein it was reiterated that the ERO's position remained unchanged, PCPOA submitted an appeal on July 31st of 2015, and requested your board to exercise your discretion and refer the dispute to a third-party hearing process. On September 1st, 2015, your board ordered that the appeal be heard by a third-party hearing officer, who would then submit an advisory opinion to your board for a final decision. In accordance with your board's direction, a hearing was held on February 4th, 5th, and 17th of 2016, and on May 13th, 2016, the hearing officer issued his advisory recommendation wherein he recommends that the board deny the appeal. Following this introduction, PCPOA representatives will speak for a maximum of ten minutes. Next, the employee relations officer representatives will speak for no more than ten minutes. And then PCPOA representatives may reply for no more than five minutes. At the conclusion of the presentations, your board will be asked to determine whether or not you agree with the employee relations officer and hearing officer determination. Your action to adopt, modify, or reject the recommendation to the board will also require that you take action to grant or deny the appeal. Pursuant to the employee, employer relations policy, the board's decision on the appeal is final and binding. Counsel, do you have any other clarification on this quasi-judicial process?
No, not at this time. As the director has just stated, the board really has only three issues to consider in this, whether to affirm and adopt the hearing officer's recommendation, which was the purpose of the referral to the hearing officer, or whether to modify or reject it, and if that is the case, the board will be, will have to give direction to counsel to prepare findings as to where the board disagrees with the hearing officer's decision.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes.
Jerry, what is the proper standard of review here, de novo? Is it?
I think that, as we pointed out at the time the board referred it to the hearing officer, the board always has the discretion to do, to determine it de novo.
So, it's a de novo to review? Okay, all right, thank you.
See, now, there are questions to come at this point, so we will hear first from the PCPOA representatives.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Bosch, members of the board. PCPOA respectfully requests this board to reject the arbitrator's recommendation to deny PCPOA's appeal of the ERO's determination that PCPOA is not an appropriate unit. Despite the arbitrator's recommendation following the hearing, PCPOA remains confident and steadfast in their position that PCPOA is in fact an appropriate unit. It may not be the best possible unit, but we do believe that it is an appropriate unit. PCPOA hopes that this board will keep an open mind to our request while you are in the process of reviewing, if you have not done so already, the voluminous transcripts, exhibits, and briefs that the county and PCPOA provided during this appeal. PCPOA also requests that the board keep in mind that over eighty percent of the two-hundred-plus correctional and probation officers in this proposed unit have been and continue to be extremely dissatisfied with their current bargaining unit and representation. As law enforcement officers, PCPOA membership strongly believes that they require representation that has a greater understanding of the needs and of the, due to the dangers that these law enforcement officers face on a daily basis. The corrections and probation officer classifications are in a unique position as it relates to law enforcement, in that these officers are tasked with a complicated job of transitioning county inmates from a custodial to non-custodial supervision with the goal of rehabilitating these inmates into law-abiding and productive members of this community. Placer County is a very progressive county in the area of rehabilitation, and, as I'm sure you all are very aware, has allocated significant resources to rehabilitation efforts throughout the county. Together, the correction and probation officers are the key to this county's success in the area of rehabilitation for county offenders. For the county to achieve its goals and reference rehabilitation, the county's correctional and probation officers need a stronger voice within this county, which is why these classifications over the past several years have sought to sever from their existing bargaining units and form their own bargaining unit. I know the county has plenty to consider in terms of briefs, which has plenty of arguments from PCPOA's attorney, but I think, at least for the purposes of, of today, that it's more important, I think, for the board to hear from PCPOA membership. And with that, I'd like to turn the microphone over to the PCPOA president, Trista Shirfi. Joshua Olander, represent, counsel for PCPOA.
I have, Rebecca was unfortunately not able to be here today, so I'm going to speak for her first.
And could you state your name for the record, please?
Oh, sorry, Trista Shirfi, with probation, president of PCPOA. Rebecca asks that the board also set aside the arbitrator's opinions. There has been a lot of funding put in place for reentry programs, as you know, through prep in the jail and transitioning out from probation. And the collaboration that we have right now between probation and corrections is better than I've ever seen it in the sixteen years that I've been here. And I see it progressing, honestly. We are working together on a daily basis with people in custody, transitioning them out of custody, and getting them into rehabilitation, rehabilitation programs that we can. That was from Rebecca. So, she wasn't able to be here, and I just wanted to read that for, on her behalf. On my behalf, I'm also asking that you reject what the arbitrator had said. We set out to form PCPOA approximately two and a half years ago was when it first started. We felt that as probation and correction officers, we have a unique quality that we both are working with the same population, whether it be in custody or out of custody. Since we are currently both in PPEO, but have those specific needs that we need as probation and correctional officers, we thought this was going to be our best option. We still feel that this is our best option, and, like I said, corrections and probation are working together more than ever. And I know that the ER, ERO made its decision, and the arbitrator has made its recommendation, but we would really appreciate the board to look at everything and, and to consider, take everything into consideration, and recognize that forming PCPOA is the best interest of the county as well as probation and correction officers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can we ask questions of who makes the presentation?
Unless counsel says we can't.
Yes.
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions for counsel.
Yes.
The, the, the basis of the arbitrator's decision, as well as the, the prior, the ERP decision, was one of representation, correct? The, the standard is, is not necessarily, you know, the classifications itself, it's whether or not the unit can represent those or part of the classification, correct?
I'm not sure if I understand your question.
Okay, the, the standard is basically, is that you have to, the, the, the unit has to be able to represent a community of interest of those that are in the, the unit, right?
Correct.
Okay, so, do, do you disagree that there are differences between how PCP, or, or PCPOA has their membership, which are represented by sworn police officers, or sworn deputies, and probation? How is that different from the represent, the classifications that you have here that you want to create between the three different subgroups? How, how is that? Or is there a difference, in your opinion?
Still not sure that I'm, that I'm following you. We have, and maybe, maybe I can go through, so PCPOA seeks to combine correctional officers, which are non-sworn-
Right.
-from the general bargaining unit, the probation officers, which are sworn peace officers from the professional unit, combine them into a mixed unit, which would be PCPOA, which is, you know, these multiple classifications from these two groups. We're seeking to combine them, and, and I'm sorry, I don't understand the difference-
I get that.
...that you're trying to establish.
Comparing it to, to the other units that are there.
So, we're talking about professional?
We're, we're talking about the DSA.
The DSA, okay.
Okay? Comparing your, you know, how the DSA and how their interests are-
Yes.
Would you disagree that they, that those, that the interests of these different subgroups are different than the DSA as a whole?
I think that they, they share a lot of similarities and differences. We're talking about the DSA is obviously a law enforcement bargaining unit. Corrections and probation are also law enforcement classifications, so in that, there are similarities. But we also have within the DSA, there are sworn, non-sworn positions, as well as PCPOA. So, in, in that, they're very similar. I think, of course, there are differences, just as there are many differences within the bargaining unit and the professional unit between those classifications. I think generally speaking, we're talking about a law enforcement organization, or law enforcement bargaining unit within the DSA, which is also what PCPOA seeks to do, but I'm still, I still don't think that I'm getting at your question.
My understanding is, is the whole idea about representation, all right?
Yes.
The reason that DSA exists as a separate entity-
Yes.
-is that they can represent those folks that are within that organization because they do have a community of interest.
Yes.
They're not so different within DSA as they are, you know, as they would be in, if you had folks that were culinary or something like that.
Sure.
Do you understand?
I do.
And all, all I'm, all I'm asking is that the purpose of this unit is representation.
Correct.
All right? And the purpose is, is that whoever, you know, this, this unit needs to be able to represent those within it.
Yes.
Would you disagree that, or would you agree or disagree that the distinctions and the characterizations, are there more differences or less differences than, for example, DSA?
There are more differences or similarities between the classifications within PCPOA than the classifications within the DSA?
Yeah.
I honestly- I honestly don't, I, I, I don't have an answer to that. I, I think that, and I, I think maybe what you're getting at is, is maybe the underlying question, it might be, why don't corrections and probation seek to join the DSA? Is that maybe where?
No, no, that's not the question. Uh, you know, getting back to the, to what the arbitrator wrote, he basically said that there were distinctions between those three classifications, all right, that were, that were distinct and different, that it would make it very difficult for representation to occur.
I, I, I don't, I don't believe that's what the arbitrator was saying. I believe the arbitrator was saying that the, that probation and corrections is not an appropriate unit because of the differences between probation and corrections. The arbitrator was not analyzing whether or not probation and corrections share differences or similarities with the DSA.
I'll, I'll read this direct from the summary.
Thank you.
It says, "It is the ability of a bargaining representative to represent employees based on a recognized community of interest."
Yes.
Considerations, all right?
Correct.
PCPOA has shown that there are common high-level goals, and I think you've met that threshold, um, among the classifications it seeks to represent. It has not shown that the classifications have a community of interest as defined in the criteria of ANC of the ERP.
Yes, and that is the community of interest between probation and corrections. It has nothing to do with the DSA.
I'm, I'm just using the example of the DSA, because they have common interests.
Yes.
Can represent themselves.
Yes, they do.
Okay.
Yes, so now I understand.
Thank you.
Yes, and I agree.
Any other questions or comments at this time? See none. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, so next, the employee relations officer representative has also ten minutes.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I am Arlene Kachalia, an attorney for the law firm of Liebert Cassidy Whitmore. I represent the county's employee relations officer in this matter. We are here today for the board's review and consideration of the hearing officer's report and recommendation that the appeal of PCPOA be denied. The county, through its employee relations officer, asked that the board affirm and adopt the hearing officer's recommendation in its entirety and deny PCPOA's appeal. Based upon the evidence presented, the policy objectives, and the hearing officer's analysis, it is clear that the association's proposed unit of correctional officers and deputy probation officers is not an appropriate unit under the county's employer-employee relations policy. It is also important to note that throughout the proceedings for the past year, the association has had a full and fair opportunity to present its arguments, its theories, and evidence in support of its petitions. However, it has failed to meet its burden throughout the process for why its petition should be granted or why its proposed unit of correctional officers and deputy probation officers is appropriate. The hearing officer issued a thorough report and recommendation that the association's appeal be denied. In reaching his recommendation, the hearing officer reviewed the entire record as prepared by the parties and presented to him. Here today, in making the determination of whether a proposed, whether the proposed unit is appropriate, the board should review the county's employer-employee relations policy, which provides the objective standards and factors for consideration. This policy sets forth the objectives, objectives in determining the appropriateness of units. Overall, these policy objectives require that the appropriate unit be the broadest feasible grouping of positions that share an identifiable community of interest. The policy states several factors that should be considered in the analysis. These factors weigh against PCPOA's request and appeal. I will address the key factors for the board's determination of the appropriate unit. These are the first three factors identified in the county's policy. They are, one, the similarity of the kinds of work, qualifications, and working conditions between the correctional officers and the deputy probation officers. Two is the history of representation in the county, and three is the consistency within the organizational patterns of the county. As found by the hearing officer, this case turns on the first and third factors, which weigh heavily against granting PCPOA's appeal. Now, factor one is the similarity in kinds of work, qualifications, and working conditions. The PCPOA failed to meet its burden under factor number one. The hearing officer provided the board with his detailed findings over several pages in his decision for why the association failed to meet its burden approving this factor. PCPOA presented overgeneralizations and no real specifics. And this factor contains three subparts. One, the kinds of work. Two, qualifications. And general working conditions. I'm not gonna go in through detail each of the three subparts, but I do want to point your attention to certain key facts that support this factor against PCPOA's petitions. Now, the kinds of work. By their very nature, deputy probation officers perform the work of a professional employee. Deputy probation officers are engaged in professional kinds of work. They perform analytical work, whether in the field or at the juvenile detention facility. They are working with probationers. Deputy probation officers are always evaluating information, assessing the individuals who they, who are their clients, preparing reports for the courts, appearing in court and testifying in court about their reports, investigating and enforcing conditions of probation. The probation officers at Juvenile Hall are knowledgeable in the positive behavior intervention and supports program, where they are working with, talking to, and rehabilitating kids at the juvenile detention facility. On the other hand, correctional officers do not perform the same high level of analytical work. In contrast, correctional officers are mostly charged with non-analytical guard duties. Unlike the probation officers, correctional officers are focused upon the safety and security in the jails and the welfare of inmates. Correctional officers are securing adult inmates in the jails. They do not work with juveniles, and they are not assigned to work at the juvenile detention facility. The hearing officer provided a detailed description of the kinds of work performed, and again, it comes down to the different nature, level, and type of work these two groups of classifications perform. They are just different. And I would focus your attention on pages twelve through seventeen of the hearing officer report for the description of the work and the differences. The second subpart of factor number one is qualifications. Here again, PCPOA failed to prove similar qualifications. Probation officers require either an associate of arts degree or a bachelor's college degree or the equivalent. On the other hand, correctional officers have no college unit or degree, degree requirement. Rather, correctional officers are only required to have completed twelfth grade or to have a GED. Finally, the last subpart of factor one is the working conditions. Again, PCPOA failed to prove that the working conditions are similar. As an initial matter, deputy probation officers work in the probation department under the chief probation officer. Correctional officers, on the other hand, work in the corrections division in the sheriff's department under the sheriff. And there's various key distinctions made by the hearing officer that I would point your attention to in, in the opinion as well. Another key distinction between correctional officers and the deputy probation officers is that the probation officers are peace officers, and that's a key distinction here. Correctional officers are not peace officers. They are custodial officers under the penal code. And this is a key factor, 'cause it goes into the second factor for consideration, the consistency with the organizational patterns of the county. The PCPOA's proposed unit is inconsistent with the existing organizational patterns. And as questioned by Mr. Duran, the, the county has three bargaining units, the general and professional and the law enforcement unit, which is, the latter is represented by the deputy sheriff's association. Now, correctional officers belong to the general unit, deputy probation officers belong in the professional unit. The proposed unit would mix peace officers, the deputy probation officers, with non-peace officer employees, who are the correctional officers. And the proposed unit would also propose to mix professional employees with non-professional employees. And the hearing officer found that this mixed unit was inherently unstable, and the county agrees. Under the law, professional units, professional employees are allowed to be in a unit of only professional employees. Peace officers, also under the law, are entitled to be in their own separate unit of peace officers. Here, deputy probation officers are both peace officers and professional employees. Correctional officers are neither. At any time in the future, deputy probation officers would have a right to break out of the mixed unit at any time, leaving a unit solely comprised of correctional officers. And as found by the hearing officer, this proposed unit is small and inherently unstable. Finally, the third factor relevant today is what the PCPOA has already touched on today, and that is the history of representation. PCPOA points to the fact that its employees, who have signed the petition, are dissatisfied with their current representation. But as found by the hearing officer, that is not a determining factor. There is no dispute that a good majority of the total of, number of correctional officers and deputy probation officers who sign the petition is something in the range of eighty percent. However, even if one hundred percent of the correctional officers and deputy probation officers had signed the petitions for severance, this is not a determinative ground or sole ground for granting the petitions. Rather, the employee, employee relate, employer-employee relations policy makes clear that PCPOA must meet its burden of proving that a six-factor test balances in favor of granting the petitions.
And I'm sorry, your, your ten minutes are.
Oh, sorry.
I need to wrap it, please.
Sure, thank you. The, the balance, the factors here did not weigh in favor of the association, even with the, the number of employees interested in having the petition be granted. We ask that the board find that the proposed unit is not appropriate, and the proposed unit would not provide employees effective representation based upon a recognized community of interest, and would not be the broadest feasible grouping of, um, positions that share an identifiable community of interest. Again, we ask that the board affirm and adopt the hearing officer's report and deny the association's appeal.
Thank you. And Jack?
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions for, for you also. Did, did, uh, is this our, this is our, we wrote the policy, correct?
Correct.
Is it, okay.
And generally speaking, it would have to be, um, sent to the, the unions for conferring, mean conferring.
Okay.
For agreement.
A couple, uh, well, my first question is, is that, um, the general policy objectives in one and two, uh, the efficient operations of the county and its compatibility with the primary responsibility of the county and its employees to effectively and economically serve the public, and number two, providing employees with effective representation based on a recognized community of interest considerations. Do those policy considerations, are those policy considerations primary to this criteria, A through, through F? I mean, uh, when, when you compare the two, uh, in your opinion, our, the ultimate goal is, is one and two, and you're saying that under the existing criteria of A through F, that we don't meet one and two. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. So one and two, and there's actually a, a three, that's not specified as three, it says the policy objectives require that the appropriate unit be the broadest feasible.
Thank you for asking me for, for including that. So that is a criteria. Number three.
Correct. But, uh, number, number three, yes.
I'm really having a problem with the word broadest. That's a big problem for me. When that says thus the poli, the, thus policy objectives require the appropriate unit shall be the broadest feasible grouping of positions that share an identifiable community of interest. Would, would, would not three groupings of folks, um, would that not, is that not broad enough?
Um, so the dep, no, my, it's, it's the county's position that the deputy probation officers and correctional officers combined is not the broadest feasible grouping of positions. We also don't believe that the community, the correctional officers and probation officers share an identifiable community of interest, so we would have to read that entire sentence together. First of all, they don't meet the, the standard for an identifiable community of interest. Even if they did, they're not the broadest feasible grouping, because there's a lot of other classifications out there that could be considered to have an equal community of interest with those classifications.
I'm glad it's not me, where you're at. Thank you very much. I appreciate both of your, uh, both of your comments.
And now, um, PCPOA will have five more minutes, if they wish.
Thank you for the additional five minutes, but PCPOA does not need it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone from the public who'd like to address the board on this item? Seenan, I will bring it back to the board and/or guidance from counsel or human resources.
Excellent. Um, so getting to Jack's question about these two separate terms, broadest feasible grouping and identifiable community of interest, in order to even get to, the way I read that, the broadest feasible grouping fragment of that phrase, there would have to be an identifiable community of interest preliminarily before you could even get to that broadest feasible grouping question.
I, I think the two phrases have to be read together. And, you know, broadest possible, uh, feasible grouping, for instance, could include, as the arbitrator stated, correctional officers and dispatchers could be a community of interest, and this group doesn't have the broadest feasible positions in it.
Thank you.
Uh, Jack?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, are there questions? Kirk?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'm just gonna go ahead and move that we affirm the hearing officer's written, written recommendation in its entirety, including the hearing officer's findings of fact.
It's been moved and seconded, um, to affirm the decision that was made by the, um, employee relations officers. All, are there any further discussion or comment? All those, uh, we need a roll call vote.
Yes.
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 Yes, thank you. Okay, we'll now take up, uh, again, our capital facilities financing plan workshop, and we will start on, uh, page five of our PowerPoint. Andy? And team?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Uh, I'd like to pick up where we left off. The, the information that you see on this slide before you is actually the updated project listing. Uh, it's twenty-seven projects that are, uh, delineated in the staff report itself and for, for which each project is, has a one-pager or multiple pages to discuss the project, um, project summary, uh, where the project is, costs, timelines, estimated timelines, and potential return on investment, just as much as we knew about the project as possible. Uh, what these projects are, are the, is the first cut at the tier, tier placement. So most are in alignment with the multi-year capital plan priorit, prioritization, uh, where we discuss those six criteria that have different weightings to them, um, and different projects are ranked accordingly. Uh, so most of these are in alignment with that multi-year capital plan. And then some projects have planning efforts that are currently underway or soon to be underway and are in different tiers. So where you have a, a tiers. So where you have a planning effort that may involve, like Parks and Trails Master Plan, where a master plan will be underway and be undertaken, that will result in some capital cost that will need to be incurred to the extent the master plan is implemented. Parks and Trails Master Plan is one of those, the Sunset Industrial Area Master Plan is one of those, Platte County Government Center Master Plan is one of those. These projects may be in different tiers, and we try to place them in the tier consistent with where we thought subsequent to the completion of the master plan, the project itself may land based on some of the capital priorities that may come out of the plan itself. So again, this ranking by tiers is just the first cut at the tier placement based on exactly what we know. The project cost, very importantly, is an estimated project cost. This project cost may need to be revisited in some cases. We've taken, again, what we know based on certain feasibility studies that we've had, based on information that's been provided in the multi-year capital plan in the past, but we try to take a stab at exactly what the, what the project cost is. Some capital projects have been, have a forty percent soft cost, which is an average soft cost added to them in some cases. We need to go back and maybe revisit this on a couple of the projects. So where you see some of the projects may be high, we actually do need to go back and look at those soft costs in some cases to make sure that we're not double counting, but more importantly, that costs are truly accounted for correctly. And then funding by the capital facilities fees is also delineated in this, in this project listing of the twenty-seven projects, where you see an X by certain projects. And this is just staff's best guess at this point in time for those projects that are in, the twenty-seven projects that will be, that are expected to be in the plan, that will qualify for use of the capital facilities impact fee. So those capital facilities impact fee for prioritized projects will be programmed accordingly, and as will all other revenue sources that will be required beyond the use of the capital facilities fee, recognizing that what we have now with capital facilities fee will not be enough to undertake some of these projects. As I mentioned earlier, our group today will be focusing on a focused discussion on projects in tier two. Again, projects in tier two require certain policy direction to proceed, supported by further analysis in some cases. That analysis may involve operational and funding leverage points, where we're looking at the ability to look at different types of funding and actually leverage those different types of funding into undertaking the project to get operations moving. Best uses of capital needs to be considered. Ongoing costs is a large item that needs to be considered for some of these projects, where undertaking these projects and putting them in the ground actually will result in increased ongoing costs to actually run the operation. Operational efficiencies should be considered, and in some cases, we need to go back and determine exactly what those operational efficiencies amount to, both qualitatively and quantitatively. Other agency partnerships in some cases need to be considered. Where we're looking at the collaboration with other municipal jurisdictions or counties, and potentially other nonprofits or just public agent, public-private partnerships that may be advantageous to the undertaking of the project itself. Return on investment needs to be looked at, both qualitatively and quantitatively, and then alignment with financial policies, where your board has budget and financial policies that are, that are discussed in the budget document itself, and that we pay particular attention to when funding capital projects, and then also when we create new policies for the use of funds specific to capital priorities. The list of projects that you see here is the projects that we've put in tier two. We'll be going through each one of these projects in a focused discussion. We'll start with myself, where I'll talk about the miscellaneous projects that are on here, and then we'll move down the line to discuss the projects. I'm going to pause right there and address any questions at this point in time, and kind of the bridging from 2011 to 2016, before we actually get to the discussion of the projects in general, to answer any questions you might have.
Jennifer?
Andy, can you go back one slide, please?
Yeah.
Thank you. So I just want to make sure on this slide that this is understood for everyone. Let's just take the top line item here, the Health and Human Services Office Building. The eight hundred and three thousand, almost eight hundred and four thousand dollars that is in the sixteen seventeen proposed budget is for the analysis and the planning, not the actual construction.
That's correct. So what this is for, space planning, basically.
So the one hundred nine million dollars, ten-year estimated cost, is that construction or is that construction plus operation?
That's construction plus all soft costs. Various contingencies were built in. This information was just received last week, and we actually had a meeting with the architects that put the programming study together. This was the highest cost that they had. And again, why this is in tier two is we need to actually go back and look at what they've actually built into those costs, to see whether or not there can be things removed from the cost. Maybe some things that we're actually doing from a county staff perspective that will reduce these costs. This is part of the analysis that needs to be done, but this is more or less a worst-case scenario for the building itself. It includes all soft costs.
Okay. So then going down to the bottom of this list, item C, Parks and Trails Master Plan.
Mm-hmm.
I'm assuming it's not going to cost us twenty-five million, four hundred thousand dollars for a master plan. That's the infrastructure that would come out of the master planning process.
That's exactly right.
Why are we not breaking those out between planning, which is a process, and is not infrastructure, and actual infrastructure?
It's a good question. So to the extent we're undertaking these plans or feasibility studies, and in most cases for some of these projects, that's what we're doing, that could be defined as a tier one project for that purpose in and of itself. Once we have the results of the master plan or the feasibility study, however, there may be further analysis that staff needs to conduct, where we need to go back and determine what the funding sources might be, what some of the operational efficiencies might be, return on investment, to make sure that this is falling into a, a tier two project, but more importantly, that we want to recommend it to your board to push forward from a, just from a prioritization perspective and moving, and moving forward with the project itself. What we've tried to do with these projects, the Parks and Trails Master Plan, the Platte County Government Center, and the Sunset Industrial Area Plan, is line those up with where we believe, subsequent to receiving the initial study, the master plan itself or the feasibility study, where that project may ultimately end up in a tier. This is very fluid, it could change. Again, this is just staff's best guess on where they may end up.
So I guess, what I'm struggling with is the fact that we're putting planning, which I do not see as a capital facilities cost, into the capital facilities financing plan. And I compare it to something like the update that we're doing right now in the Tahoe Basin of the area plans up there. That's a planning process, but I wouldn't expect to see that, even though there may be some specific facilities that come out of that
Right.
in this budget presentation. And so I'm struggling, and you don't have to give me an answer, just, I'm really struggling with why we're sort of mixing the planning and the infrastructure piece here. And then following on that is getting, again, back to that tier four thing, which is ongoing, sort of expected annual operating costs. Again, I don't see that as something that should probably be in this infrastructure analysis.
Okay.
Those should probably, at least in my mind, can't speak for the rest of the board, have their own area of the budget for ongoing maintenance, and probably roll into some of that contributions to maintain and rehab any of this infrastructure that we actually do build. So just food for thought.
Yeah, and maybe I can add just a little bit of clarity to that. The, all of these projects are capital in general. So what we're trying to do is not focus so much on just the facilities anymore, where we're looking at the capital facilities based on growth, you know, population increases and the such, but more so the comprehensive list of capital projects that are on top of the county. Ultimately, these projects en masse will need to be funded. How those projects are prioritized, which includes both the capital facilities that will need to be built based on growth, and maybe capital projects that maybe are built not based on growth, ultimately are going to compete for a funding source that likely will include general fund discretionary money, which is why you see the ongoing maintenance-type costs, like, you know, the recurring amount that's provided for with capital projects funded each year, the four and a half million, the three point eight million for roads, in that mix. It's important to point out that your board has allocated more than the eight point three million for that ongoing maintenance in the past couple of years, where you've actually allocated additional million or two million dollars in the last two years, respectively, for additional road maintenance. So all of these funds, particularly the general fund discretionary money, need to be allocated to this array of projects that includes both capital facilities, and ultimately, based on a master plan being completed or a feasibility study being completed, a project, undertaking a project that may not be applicable to the capital facilities fee itself. So, and then again, capital is just one of many emerging priorities for those challenges and choices that your board considers each year. So it's really getting a good understanding of how pursuant to your direction, and that we bring forward a most comprehensive listing of how we're going to approach capital in the future, and for that matter, the priorities that you've delineated for us as we prepare budgets.
Okay. And then following up on that, because I understand certainly some of the logic behind that, how then does the financial system replacement play into that? To me, that's software.
The implementation of it itself.
Yeah.
Significantly. Because what the financial system replacement project will do is really give us a more robust level of reporting. It will give us a much better idea of how we budget for capital projects. Right now, we have a budget system that is outside of the financial system itself, where all budgetary decisions and the preparation of the budget itself are done essentially in Excel spreadsheets. And there's only so much power you can generate using Excel spreadsheets. Having all of the financial data resident in one system, including a budget module that will be part of the new financial system, will allow it to work, interplay, and it'll give us a much better idea so that we can inform your board to make better decisions with the financial data. So it's huge.
So would that nineteen and a half million, ten-year estimated cost then be allocated throughout departments and throughout budgetary line items, or entirely to the capital facilities financing plan?
Could be a combination of both. So, I mean, the financing plan at this point in time really hasn't been looked at in finite detail, but I know that we do intend on working with countywide departments, and for that matter, any districts that the county is involved with that use our financial system, or, you know, house their information or funds in our financial system to make sure that they are being charged a fair share for the implementation of this, of this new system. And at the same time, there may be some opportunity to spread out costs or at least financing or something like that.
Okay. And that, you kind of identified my concern on that, which is, I'm, while I see the relationship to capital facilities and the financial system replacement, and believe me, I think the financial system replacement absolutely needs to occur, no questions on that, I'm uncomfortable, at least with this chart, which allocates it all to capital facilities financing plan, when it probably needs to be spread to all different departments and the other jurisdictions that also utilize our financial planning services.
Right.
Thank you.
I'll just build on that a little bit. I'm presuming, without getting too much into the accounting weeds, but if something ought to be capitalized, spread over multiple years, expensed over multiple years for accounting purposes, I'm assuming that's what is causing the monies to be put into the capital facilities master plan. Is that pretty much accurate? And so strategic monies that would be more operational on an annual basis, I think what Jennifer is saying is she doesn't want those in there, and I think that has merit, if I'm understanding that delineation accurately.
Yeah, and we can, we can call that out specifically. As part of the plan, I'd have to go back and look at whether or not these, the ten-year ultimate costs include any component of ongoing costs, year after year after year. But to the extent those are there, we can take those out when we bring the plan back. However, having said that, if there is an ongoing cost, it's something that does need to be considered in the context of prioritizing and ultimately undertaking a project, because it's money that will ultimately need to be come up with.
And then maybe that's, maybe that separation or delineation would be helpful, too. So for, you know, obviously, a huge investment in some kind of a software package needs to be spread over the years of service for which it's going to provide that service, but it's not bricks and mortar, so it's different. And any strategic analysis that might be done ongoingly, however, would really not be a part of that. It's the kind of thing that we're doing some of every single year for a range of different purposes and needs. So that confusion, I think, is something we, maybe we could brighten that up a little bit.
Okay. Jack?
Yeah, no, I, I get what you're trying to do. And conceptually, I'm with you as far as the concept. And I also get what Jen and Robert are talking about, about breaking this stuff out at a later date. The one thing that I would suppose that would happen is that if we approve the concept, you're going to be bringing back to us a document that has the, you know, the tiers, and then has the support behind them. So what I'm going to be anticipating is that all those tier one projects that are ready for primetime have the backup attached to them, and they're good to go. And those tier two and below projects, you're going to be able to tell us what needs to be done, like you're trying to do here. So I get the fact that there's some missing information, but if you're just asking us to approve a concept, and you're going to come back with the full list of, you know, we're ready to go on this, this, and this, and these are the other things that we need for tier two, three, and four, in order for it to jump to a tier one, then that's what, that's what I'm looking for, and I think that'll kind of ease what tension I think I'm getting here.
Yeah, and I'll just throw into that, that sometimes those definitions are not that clear. Sometimes they become somewhat judgmental, even in the world of accounting.
Right. And as we're looking at it right now, we're just looking at a list of projects, and, you know, our folks out there, you know, that don't understand it at the level that we do, just say, well, why is my project in tier four?
Right.
You know, when actuality, it's really close to being in tier one, but we just don't have the backup right now to be able to show that. So.
Kirk?
Yeah, I, before we start talking about the specific projects, after having had the chance to sit with you guys and go over some of these things, in my mind, I think as, as I'm looking at specific projects, I'm looking at the two roles that the county can play with our capital facilities financing. I'm looking at the role of county as a service provider versus county as a catalyst. And from the standpoint of county as a service provider, it's one of those things that we do by virtue of being an agent of the state government, and therefore also the federal through the roll-down process. And what are those capital facilities that we need to meet those obligations that we have as a service provider? But in analyzing that, I don't think it can be done in a vacuum without regard to, to whom we're providing the service. I mean, simply looking at the drawing of our district lines would tell you that while we have this nice DeWitt Center right here, four of our districts are south of here. And so that means eighty percent of our population is south of here. And, and so what services do we provide, and where do we need to be providing them? And so when we start talking about specific projects like an HHS building, where's the right place for that, and can we really have a discussion about an HHS building until we bifurcate that conversation of what part of HHS is public-facing, and driven by service delivery to the people of primarily down the hill, versus what is more internal or administrative that can be performed away from the population and meets other needs? And I know that Ken is looking at kind of our DeWitt master plan... And I know that Ken is looking at kind of our DeWitt master plan. I would just hate for us to get too far down that road of planning that and specific facilities and needs without viewing it from the standpoint of what do we as a county do that provides services? I'll take this building as a great for instance. We make everybody in the South County come up here to get plan check done and all the rest when most of the stuff happens down there. And yet, we built this really nice building here that we're sitting in. So, before we get too far down the road of having these conversations about new buildings and all the rest, I really think we need to look at where will those services be provided on an ongoing basis? Now, where it gets interesting in my mind is the potential overlap when we talk about county as a service provider versus county as a catalyst. Clearly, for me, I'm thinking county as a catalyst, okay, what are the kinds of infrastructure improvements we could put in the ground in the Sunset Industrial area that would encourage private sector investment to come in, increase the assessed valuation on these parcels in an area that is probably the most favorable tax rate area to the county? So, that's kind of county as a catalyst, but then you have some projects that are almost like hybrid in my mind. You have the county as a service provider role corner, but can that also act as a catalyst through the opportunity to provide services under contract to other jurisdictions which then offset our existing ongoing operations costs by virtue of us being able to provide Coroner, Crime Lab type of, so those kinds of opportunities, which are exciting, fun opportunities for us to be looking at, kind of what we've done with the Empower program, how, you know, we built that knowing we were going to reach out to other jurisdictions and say, we'll manage this for you and thereby drive down our overall operational cost. So, as I'm looking at these kinds of projects, it's with some big question marks in the back of my mind, have we really done the analysis yet that tells us just where we should be as a service provider in terms of providing services to the people that we need to meet? I mean, I'm seeing Mr. Ronco out there, how many of the people that come up for recorder services or election services and all the rest, how many are from here versus down the hill? And should his office long-term be up here forcing people up the Highway 49 corridor or should they be down the hill somewhere? And as I just look out across, you know, we're already, we've already stuck, Mr. Owens down there with his department, which is probably good. So, it's just, it's kind of in that vein that I'm looking at these lists and looking forward to having more conversation about this, but I really think it needs to be tied into that overall facilities conversation that we're having here at the DeWitt Center as well.
Absolutely.
Good, and then Jennifer, your?
Yeah, I wanted to follow up because I think Kirk just raised some really excellent points. Well, you're welcome. You often do. And I kind of want to-
Could we just pause for a moment?
I know, I'm sorry. Kumbaya!
Okay.
It's all good, we're over it now. But I think that kind of gets to one of the issues that I raised in our discussion yesterday, which is while it's great that staff has identified recommendations and while it's great that the board may think that we know what's going on with capital infrastructure needs, we've got to reach out to the community to find out what does the community think we need? They need to be part of this input process. And, you know, I think we haven't had a good mechanism for doing that in the past. I think this, I'm going to get the name wrong, the new vote.
Flash vote.
Flash vote, thank you. I wanted to call it quick vote. I think the new flash vote thing can be really helpful in helping us understand that because if we're building either the wrong stuff or in the wrong place, it's not serving the purpose that we need to be serving. And I think also, you know, I've been looking over the project's criteria to create the tiers, and I did have just a couple of quick questions about that. So, who was on the board that created these criteria? Who was the group that created the criteria for analyzing ultimately what tier something falls into?
Did you want to answer that, Gretchen? I'm going to have Gretchen come up. She was in part of the infrastructure and investment, or the infrastructure investment committee that looked at the criteria.
Morning.
Morning.
Gretchen Nedved with the County Executive Office. So, I just wanted to give a little bit of history on the infrastructure investment committee that Andy mentioned. It began back in 2012 where we really kick-started this under the new leadership of our new CEO at the time, and it was intended to create a comprehensive approach to all of our capital activities, small through large projects countywide. And the infrastructure investment committee, you may recall, was established by your board to take a look at those projects and identify a scoring mechanism to make a consistent and fair approach to countywide project priorities. And at that time, the infrastructure investment committee created a capital projects team and that was comprised of your subject matter experts across various departments, public works and facilities, HHS, public safety areas, administrative areas, et cetera. And we all got together and really thought long and hard about how to prioritize projects. Ultimately, at the end of the day, to keep the long story short, six criteria were established with associated weights. You'll note that in our capital plan, we still allude to those six criteria, and the most important one at the top of the list is economic development in which we give any project a weight of 30% of their ultimate score towards economic development because that was the, one of the county initiatives then and continues to be now. So, those projects that deliver a greater return on investment rise to the higher part of the list. Ultimately, those scores are categorized as either high, medium, or low priority projects. High projects are greater return on investment, greater customer service, leveraging, external funding sources, you name it, the six criteria. So, what we've done to kind of bridge where we were at that time into an update to our capital facilities financing plan is to recognize that plan also had a set of scoring criteria by the virtue of these tiers, one through five. So, we are looking to recommend a bridge to that tiering approach to make it more aligned and consistent with what we've been doing with the capital plan with the six scoring criteria, high, medium, and low. And by virtue of that, we've already got our high, medium, low for most of these projects that are on your list now through that historic approach back in 2012, 2013 for scoring projects. A lot of these, and if you're interested, the multi-year capital plan, Crime Lab at that point in time, way before the feasibility study, was marked as medium priority. And the HHS office building was marked as a high priority at the time. The warehouse was medium and PaaS replacement was medium. Things change over time, which is why we're trying to pull it all back in again, reestablish the tiered approach. All these projects are at different statuses. Some might want to look at a little bit more as we learn more about the projects. There may be more cost implications, long-term, short-term, programmatic implications. We could find a lot of efficiencies if we just look at these projects with our new tier definition before moving them forward accordingly. So, does that kind of answer the history on that?
It helps on the history. I'm, you know, I'm frankly, while I think that economic development is a really important criteria, I'm surprised that it gets 30% weight because as Kirk pointed out, there are things that we just have to do that may not have any sort of economic development impact at all. And so, I think it may, it may create a weighting system that isn't actually operating in the real world to a full extent. There are things we absolutely have to do. We don't have a choice about it. But it may bring zero new economic development opportunities to the county. And so, I'm just, I just want to make sure that when we use these criteria to get to this tiering system, which is how I understand, that's part of the process for the tiering system, that we're actually really reflecting the world that we're operating in, which is some things we just have to do. We don't have a choice. It brings no economic development, but that doesn't mean it should be a tier four. It still might be a tier one. And also, just the public voice piece of that, which has been lacking so far in the conversation. And I think we've got some great opportunities now to bring that public voice in, though I think if anyone saw Andy Lukonin's cartoon about flash vote in the Auburn Journal last week, I think cat videos were going to be the number one choice by the members of the community, so on how we should spend our county dollars. But I think there were some opportunities here. I just think that we aren't quite to where we need to get to be yet in terms of these tiers. And it sounds like there's an opportunity both individually and then to Jack's point, as a board, to have a conversation publicly about, you know, where do these things really fall into consideration? You know, my pet project, Tahoe Justice Center, would like to see it moved up in the tiers because I think it meets all these criteria, but it seems to still be low-ranked and I'm not quite sure why.
And if I could add on to that also, again, I'm brainstorming here in my own brain, so this is, these are scary moments, but I'm going to. So, starting from the point that, you know, I think the board's been thirsty for this workshop for some time to provide this policy input, so appreciate the opportunity and the way it's been brought forward, one. But two, I'm kind of thinking that maybe any capital requirement that we have, even if it's regulatory or mandatory, if you will, has some economic development implication. So, let's say, for example, there's a huge grant and/or we just have a requirement to do something with regards to a facility for HHS. But to the extent that that helps us achieve healthier and safer communities, it makes Placid more desirable. So, maybe, you know, part of what's going on here is just that communication thirst that I think I and my colleagues have been seeking, which includes it. So, maybe it has a really small economic evaluation bonus, but it has something. So, as long as we, I think we're thirsty for better tracking of your thought process as you do all this to make sure that we're comfortable with it from a broader policy perspective and/or have some ideas of our own. And acknowledging Kirk's extraordinarily good comments, I think another thing that I would personally encourage is that, let's say you look at the Sunset Industrial, which does have generally a high property tax base and/or a need for huge infrastructure though, and you look at a strategic plan that really puts something within the county's reach, but maybe with a risk component, I would think that all of us would want you to actually run with some of those ideas, hearing the sort of the broader comments that Kirk so well articulated, bring back to us some specific ideas, some, something that, and maybe in pulse point mode, so, you know, do you have an appetite for this? And if there's five of us, oh, yeah, absolutely, bring it back to us, but here are our concerns and winnow down, for example, the risk exposure. So, I guess my words would include that level of encouragement.
And if I may, part of what we're doing here today is just that, and I, you know, this is good timing, there is so much ahead of us, a long list of projects, and to Jennifer's point, there's always the rational thinking aside from just the weights in that we have to stay flexible in the projects that we're choosing and recognizing what we're hearing in addition to just the weights, definitely.
Kirk, do you like some?
Yeah, I want to, you know, we have, as a county, evolved, I think, very well in the right direction in terms of how we do our budget with our long-term planning and all of that. And so, you know, I want to start off by saying I think that the way that we do things now is absolutely the right way. But one of the things, and Robert will remember this, one of the things that we used to do on an annual basis, when it was the two weeks in August when we'd lock ourselves away down in Conference Room A and have every department head come in and we'd go line by line through each department head's budget over the course of two weeks, one of the things that it really did bring forward to the board members was what were the priorities of the various department heads, not just from a service standpoint, but also from a facility standpoint? And it gave us an opportunity on an annual basis to sit in front of the department heads and have them remind us, well, you remember last year, I told you we were going to need this and by God, here we are and we really need this. And so, you know, while you guys have done a lot of good work putting this together, I think it would benefit us perhaps as a board to have the departments themselves coming forward and saying, okay, here are, and this is, again, I go back to part of what Ken has been challenged with when we look at this, the planning for this facility up here. Here are the needs as we see them, HHS. Here are the needs as we see them, planning and public works and elections and treasure tax collector. This is where, these are the people that we serve, you know, here are our traditional client base, and based on this, this is where we think we should be physically located and these are the kinds of facilities that we think we need. And let's start putting together this kind of a budget based on that, but also, obviously, then we have the economic development conversation. What are the catalyst projects? And when we look at those catalyst projects, what can we anticipate in terms of return on investment for a dollar in today, over the next 10 years, and really be able to make some educated decisions? Because it's almost like at this point, it's all falling back on CEO's office to kind of absorb everything and try to take some of what you hear from us in this meeting and what you're hearing from the department heads. I think it might be helpful to have a little more interaction directly with the department heads saying, so that, you know, Mr. Ronco can get up and make his pitch for his warehouse facility, right? And he might be able to spin it into some great economic development story none of us ever thought of. He's got a casino operating in the back or something, who knows? He's innovative that way. But just having that kind of a conversation as we move this forward and let the board then say, okay, here, based on that, here are the five-year kind of priorities that we see for the limited number of dollars that we have available. And then be able to engage Janine with the conversation about, okay, of these, what are appropriate for the various finance tools that are available to us as a county? So, that's just kind of my thought.
Jim?
I just want to say I fully concur with Kirk's comments about that. I remember when I first ran for this office, I sat through three days of hearings where I saw all the department heads came in, gave us their input. It brought us closer together with the departments, I always seemed like we were kind of distancing from them. So, I would prefer to see that kind of a workshop on each of the departments can come in and tell us their needs, explain what they do. A lot of times, they just come in and tell us what they do. Sometimes that's hard for us to figure out. So, anyhow, I would concur with Kirk's comments that we should probably do that again. Thank you.
Okay, back to you guys.
Okay, based on the comments that we've heard today, just want to find out what your board's pleasure might be in terms of going through the 14 projects that we've delineated in tier two. We can give you a brief overview and/or we can work with departments to maybe have them assist us with, consistent with Supervisor Ullers' comments, make a presentation regarding a particular tier two project as defined. We're happy to go through the information today as well and kind of give you a brief overview of each of the 14 projects to take the feedback that you might have.
Well, I'm thinking, and my colleagues will readily tell me if I'm thinking wrongly, but how about a brief overview?
Okay.
We're in pretty good shape time-wise and this crew will jump into the details for sure if they so choose. None of us can stop them, so.
And if you do hear that Supervisor Duran said, "This is so great."
Down and dirty.
Good.
Okay, so I will start. I'll take the first three projects. The first project that we'll talk about is the Health and Human Services Office Building. Essentially, this is the consolidation of all the Health and Human Services administrative, technical, and programmatic activities into one building, thereby creating a one-stop-shop looking at ASOC, CSOC, public health, environmental health, and other services. These services are currently provided in several areas of the county, including the antiquated buildings or the barracks at the DeWitt Center. And having all the services in one location may be a convenient way of providing services and a more efficient way of providing services to our community. From a project status update standpoint, the programming study, as I mentioned, was recently received and staff is going through the information right now. Worst-case scenario cost, again, as I mentioned, about $109 million. There are many contingencies built into that. Also, escalation is built into that cost as well. Certain analysis that the programming study does discuss is the building size, a number of stories, location of programs and divisions, and programs that accordingly. Certain amenities could- Certain amenities could be built into the building, potential for childcare area or gym. And then the location, the location right now is programmed for the Placer County Government Center area, consistent with what we're expecting from the Placer County Government Center Master Plan update. From a return on investment perspective and a funding potential, again, just incorporating this project into the Placer County Government Center Master Plan and then working to leverage all funding sources, including federal and state funding to help pay for a portion of that building. Moving on, the PATHS replacement project, very briefly. Estimated project cost of about $19.3 million. However, this cost is expected to be returned based on the efficiencies that are created by implementing a new system. Potentially, we may also look at replacing the Acorn System, which is the county's human resource and payroll system, because of the efficiencies it would be gained by having one fully integrated system as opposed to multiple systems across the county. From a project status update, we did have a business case study prepared by Lucky Consulting, who recommended that the county move forward with an RFP for replacement of both systems. Subsequently, your board did approve the issuance of, or the appointment of contractor called Next Level, who is actually working with county staff to look at all the business processes that are provided by both systems and ultimately put out a very comprehensive RFP to generate responses with the expectation that a new system contractor will be on board by January of 2017. Again, from an ROI and funding potential, one integrated system, seamless functionality and integrability. Process enables implementation of most efficient business processes by using a vanilla system, where we would implement this system with very little customizations as possible. And then based on the fact that most systems now are managed through the cloud, there is a significant potential for resource savings moving forward as well. Moving on to the Parks and Trails Master Plan. From a project summary perspective, this is the countywide park and trail system implementation plan that will be considered to be issued to a contractor by your board in the near future. Again, this plan is to identify funding sources, partnerships, and recommended capital improvements related to the Park and Trail Master Plan. Status update, master planning efforts are currently underway. Staff is putting together the information to actually bring on a contractor, which is expected, again, to come back to your board before the end of 2016. Return on investment and funding potential does forward economic development to a great degree. Home and property values would stand to increase with a robust Trails, Parks, and Trails Master Plan effort and robust Parks and Trails. Businesses like locating here and other recreational alternatives will result, as a result of a robust trail and park network. Forwards environmental sustainability by creating a best use of open space and then funding leveraging with partnering agencies as possible when we look at working with park districts and state and federal sources and other fee-based programs. So, that was, very briefly, those three projects. What I'll do now is turn it over to Becky, who will go through the public safety projects.
All right. Good morning, Chairman Wygant, members of the board. Your board has had the opportunity to receive several briefings over the past year on the next two projects, the Crime Lab and the Sheriff's Coroner Facility. So, I'll provide a very brief recap of these projects now and just highlight a couple of steps as we see being critical and moving these projects forward should these projects be among your top priorities. So, as you will recall, the 2014 Criminal Justice Master Plan identified as a top priority the construction of a crime lab to improve overall quality and timeliness of forensic analysis. Currently, delays in receiving essential forensic services such as DNA and drug toxicology from the California Department of Justice are driving costs across the entire system. And streamlining investigation and prosecution of crime will not only reduce workload and costs for the county, law enforcement, and courts, but will also exonerate the innocent in a timely way, get offenders off the street and behind bars or into treatment and services sooner, and will bring timelier justice and resolution to victims and their families. So, through our work with the Smith Group, the feasibility study has completed preliminary space programming is now complete. And the recommended 40,000-square-foot lab would house seven forensic units, latent prints, chemistry, toxicology, DNA, firearms, digital, and imaging technology to process evidence stored on computers and cell phones. The next topic is the replacement of the 1950s-era coroner's facility, which would consist of a morgue, autopsy, and supporting components. Again, the feasibility study and preliminary space planning are now complete. And this facility would be a 28,000-square-foot facility, and there would be very minor increases in operating costs because existing staff would just transfer to the new facility. So, again, next steps, pending direction from your board, staff recommends these next discussions occur if these projects are to remain among your top priorities. First, we would recommend convening with the public safety and justice officials, including court leadership, to review the Santucci Site Plan and to verify adequate space for construction, parking, traffic flow on the Santucci Site. In addition to these two projects, there are several others that have been identified in earlier studies for the justice campus, including jail expansion for a mental health facility, additional medium security beds, and integrated educational vocational training space associated with the Senate Billage 63 state grant, Sheriff's Office, South County Substation, and an additional county office building. The thought being that the current building would become a defendant's services building, housing probation, the prep center, and possibly public defense services. And the new building would house DA staff and potentially the assessor in the South County office. So, the second step we would recommend would be continuing the programming and operational planning with the Smith Group through a contract extension of $92,000, which would inform financing and construction plans moving forward. Finally, work with the district attorney and the sheriff's office in developing the financing plan and securing fair share funding agreements with partner jurisdictions. Clearly, these are separate and distinct projects, but the feasibility study identified cost savings of $2 to $4 million should they be co-located. As far as the return on investment, discussions are a little tricky around forensic services, but both facilities provide opportunities for expanding current agency partnerships, along with opportunities to establish educational partnerships through internships and even pathology residency programs and a host of other exciting partnerships with local universities that would infuse science and technology and really elevate our forensic capability in Placer County in Northern California. We also know that cases with DNA evidence are filed at significantly higher rates, they result in convictions at higher rates, result in more, in longer prison sentences. And Denver also estimated that by getting repeat offenders off the street, they avoided hundreds of crimes annually, saving millions of dollars in property loss and law enforcement costs. So, I think that will conclude my comments on those projects for today.
Thanks.
Okay. Excuse me. Next up, I think is definitely a project that could be categorized under a catalyst project for the Sunset Industrial Area in West Placer County. It's Placer Parkway Phase One. As you're well aware, Placer Parkway is a little over 14-mile, high-speed, limited-access freeway that will ultimately connect Highway 65 out to Highway 70 and 99 in South Sutter County. The project is broken out into five phases. The first phase being Placer Parkway Phase One, which will connect the Whitney Interchange that is probably nearing completion in Rockland, excuse me, over Highway 65, landing at Foothills Boulevard North with an overcrossing of Industrial Avenue over the Unipacific Railroad tracks. The project currently will be expecting its NEPA, Federal Environmental Clearance, this fall. Design standards will be going to a more construction-level design through 2017 with anticipated right-of-way acquisition as needed, beginning in 2017, with the goal of being under construction 2018, 2019. Be a two-year construction cycle. This project represents a project that ultimately is fully funded with Tier Two fees that are levied against specific plan areas in both Placer County, Roseville, and the City of Lincoln that will ultimately fully fund this project. And it's an opportunity to look at a catalyst project that will reinvigorate portions of the Sunset Industrial Area and jumpstart them for development. Nearby the casino where it lands at Foothills Boulevard North, there's several large holdings of property owners that could create an opportunity for investment and spring that economic development return. Part of our next steps is putting together a comprehensive funding package, looking at how to leverage different fundings to jumpstart this project in advance of collection of a Tier Two fees. So, we need to return back to your board with that comprehensive finance package. Kind of tearing back off that as well with the significant efforts underway in the Sunset Area as well as the other West Placer developments and specific plans in scale. We're talking about over approximately 20,000 roughly residential units planned in West Placer County with two universities and several million square feet of non-residential uses, both commercial and regional commercial. It's a significant amount of development that needs a significant amount of infrastructure. And we have kind of an internal working group that's been working for the past few years looking at opportunities that we can potentially leverage funding to get that return on investment and reinvigorate those areas to get the economic return and spin-off. Some of the key projects, as I mentioned, Placer Parkway Phase One, hoping to be complete in 2020, as well as the first phase of the overwater treatment plant, which will provide additional capacity of 10 million gallons of water expansion that is also slated to be scheduled in 2020 for the first phase. So, there's a lot of activity that's going on. We'd need to return to your board with, again, a comprehensive financing package, working with our funding partners such as PCWA, and how we leverage those funding sources, looking at internal gap funding to jumpstart these projects, and also working with our development community, who we have significant discussions ongoing of how we just work together to jumpstart these infrastructure projects. Next up is an important topic, particularly with the economy jumpstarting itself back up and with the home prices rebounding to levels, the issue of affordable housing and workforce housing and the provision of it becomes an ever-more-important issue. I'd like to jump in real quickly, I know you said brief, but the two photos there, those are of Quartz Ridge. It's an affordable housing project that's currently under construction in the Bowman Area. 64 units available to families earning 60% or less of the area median income. We expect completion of that project for the construction in September of this year. And the interest party list is currently closed. I think it represents the need and significance of affordable housing in our region. It's a partnership that we went into with USA Properties. If you haven't seen it or you haven't been out there lately, construction is nearly complete, and it's a very high-quality project that is out there. And we're hoping for it to be complete in September and then open up and available for families to live in. As I mentioned earlier, or, excuse me, affordable and workforce housing is very important for the region, not only for our residents, but also our labor force. Planning staff has been working diligently implementing the policies as well as the programs that were identified in our housing element. One of the key things they're currently underway with is a study with Minter Harnish with a subconsultant of Catherine Hansford to look at opportunities for an in-lu fee ordinance as a mechanism to implement the affordable housing and workforce housing requirements. They're hoping to have that complete and back to your board for discussion in the fall. And subject to your board's consideration, looking at, and subject to your board's direction, then they would subsequently come back with the implementing documents and ordinances that could be available for an in-lu fee. With that, since affordable and workforce housing transcends across both East and West Placer County, and there's significant issues for both, I'll turn it over to Jennifer Merchant to talk about the East Placer County efforts.
Can I get the clicker?
Yep.
Thanks. Jennifer here batting cleanup. I'll go as quickly as I possibly can here. The next segment of the affordable housing discussion is related to work that is nearly complete that we cooperated with the town of Truckee through the Community Foundation of Tahoe Truckee on, creating a workforce housing study. We've got the draft in our offices, providing feedback on it this week, should be presented to your board in the, at the Tahoe meeting in October. So, really springboarding off of that, we've done some additional work in the community to identify what the key issues are as it relates to affordability and what some of the next steps should be. And we're, as part of that, recommending that we do follow-up studies so that we can determine if we develop cooperative efforts that are decision-making entities with the town of Truckee or joint long-term discussions with the community that could involve nonprofit groups. We've done some survey work in the community, done, including our county executive office staff in Tahoe, have done walkabouts with the Tahoe Prosperity Center to talk to businesses. And the key issue with businesses right now in ensuring that they can run a long-term healthy business is having affordable housing for employees. So, that's something that's really, you know, attracting and retaining employees for our small businesses is a key issue and feeds into what we may do long-term with this topic in the Tahoe region. I'm going to move on to the rest of the topics and really in the Tahoe region, we, the projects mostly fit into economic development and environmental priorities of your board. And a lot of the facilities that we develop not only provide services for the community, but also for visitors and because of that, have that relationship. I do wanna point out in this economic development slide here that your board did approve the investment plan last fall, and we have been working diligently to put that plan together and identify funding sources and availability of tourist accommodation units, as well as needs of other development projects in the community that could include parking or other infrastructure. One thing I will point out in the staff report, there was an error that was corrected in the PowerPoint slide earlier in that we do have some funding set aside, $421,000 right now for tourist accommodation units. But we would need probably about another $2 million to secure the units we think we need for the catalyst projects, opportunity site projects that we're looking at in Tahoe City and Kings Beach right now, plus another $2.7 million for parking improvements that we need in both of those communities. So, those are what we may be looking for as priorities in the capital fund. Next, the Resort Triangle Regional Trail System. We have talked to your board about this before. It's something that's highlighted as a priority in the Resort Association's Tourism Master Plan. We have gotten significant feedback from the community in a variety of surveys and public venues that this is a top priority in the North Lake Tahoe community, links directly with economic development for some of the reasons discussed in the Parks and Trails Master Plan. We currently have 26 miles of missing trail in the community connecting Truckee to North Lake Tahoe across the North Shore and back up to Truckee again. So, we'd be proposing that we continue planning, engineering, and design to get us to the point where we can acquire any sort of property needed to make that project go forward. It's not cheap, as in, as any project in North Lake Tahoe is not cheap. And I will note, I think there was a decimal error in one of the pages in the staff report. It's actually 78 million for the total project cost, not 7.8 million. That would have been easy, we would have done it yesterday if that were the case. But significant costs and acquisitions associated with this project, but it is identified as a high priority. Next, and in part related to bike trails, is Kings Beach Gateway Mobility. This project is almost what I'd call a last phase of the Kings Beach Commercial Core Project. Could include a roundabout at the signalized intersection that currently exists at Highway 267 and 28, but also looks at making connections and trailheads in conjunction with a restoration project that I'll talk about next, which it complements very well, to have what you might call a lakeside or closer to the lakeside trail in Kings Beach, connecting the eastern and western sides of that trail. We've been working with private partners. The project is included in the vision, Kings Beach vision, for the community that's been folded into the area plan. So, again, a lot of public input and feedback as this project was prioritized. So, recommending that that move forward. We have done some initial planning that was funded with TOT money and would be eyeing more California funding as well as some potential general fund, funding for this project. And I got three environmental improvement projects. I'll run through them as quickly as I can. The first in the Kings Beach watershed is clearing up the water quality as it heads out of the residential area into the commercial core, so that when we're accepting the water into our system on the commercial core, it's already been vetted through at least some drainage cleansing processes. So, obviously, return on investment to the environment and the potential for redevelopment in the town centers as we get credit for doing the restoration that's required in the regional plan of TRPA. Grifft Creek, a similar type of project, just in a slightly different location. As I mentioned, there's a nexus between this project and the mobility plan that would be implemented in Kings Beach. So, this is kind of the water... So this is kind of the water quality gateway, you know, beautification, entryway component to that access plan on the other end. And this has, we're hoping to receive some state funding for this project, as well as the environmental companion to that more mobility and community access project of the mobility study. I'll just flip through that slide. Burton Creek, I want to highlight this one because this one is kind of on the bubble of Tier Two and Three. So as proposed, this environmental improvement project would clean up the existing stream environment zone where the Tahoe Justice Center currently sits. Clearly, you can't do that until you move the Tahoe Justice Center. So they're really kind of companion projects that the cleanup, restoration, remediation cannot go before the Justice Center and the Public Works uses would be located, relocated into a different location. So this kind of covers both projects, and depending on which way you look at it, the relocation and construction may come in a tier higher above the restoration project, or you would include them together and then just phase them as you'd be required to do. So the Burton Creek project would look at the build-out of the potential joint courts and substation facility, and then do the associated restoration or remediation. The county has invested already into the lower end of that creek area that goes into the Lake Forest Glen Meadow, about $5 million in that project. So really, getting the upper end of that stream cleared out and remediated would be a priority project. And there is a lot of potential funding from state and federal sources. Part of that, our use of that property is actually on the, by permit, on Forest Service property. So that is an interesting, and if you include the costs of relocating and reconstructing the Justice Center, as much as $58 million. So if you include both, it's on the high side for capital needs, but a lot of return on investment there as it relates to restoration and to the potential for economic development offsets that we can get in the town center of Tahoe City within that watershed. So we think there's a lot of positive components of that project. And that's about as short as I can make it. I am done, and I'm going to pass the baton back to Andy.
Thanks.
Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Okay. That was a very brief overview of the 14 projects that were listed as Tier Two projects. What we'd like to do now is this is basically the closing of the staff's presentation, and looking to the board to affirm the approach that we're taking from, by moving from the 2011 capital facilities financing plan to more comprehensive look at capital and infrastructure prioritization and in funding as we move into 2016 and developing that plan. With the updated tier definitions, the 2016 project listing that we have of the 27 projects, and then any feedback you might have on the Tier Two projects or other projects that are delineated in as part of the 27, and then ultimately, we'd like to align that with the multi-year capital plan when we bring it back to your board for consideration of a financing plan moving forward. So with that, I'll turn it over to the board.
Thanks, Andy. So what is your, or kind of exact plans as to next steps? Particularly in, you know, maybe, based on some comments you've heard today, you have some changes in your next steps, but just so we know where we're headed.
From a timing perspective?
Correct.
So, timing perspective will be, ultimately, it would be really nice if we could bring this back with the final budget. And the goal is to have this document done with the final budget, which will come before your board September 13th. That may pose a significant amount of work, depending on the feedback that we receive, but it would be before, not too long after that, if we do not make the final budget. So.
Okay. With that, let me float something for my colleagues and for staff. So based on everybody's comments, but specifically referring Dr. Kirk's recollection of the good old days when we heard these department, by department budget hearings in Conference Room A, I'm not hearing Kirk wanting to go back to that, but some kind of an infusion from our department heads as it relates to a firm or known input from department heads at some level in our budgetary process, just so we can hear from them in a public setting. So during those days, we collapsed the budget intensely into that two-week timeframe. Now that process is spread really over a 12-month period, which I greatly prefer, but I want my colleagues to chime in. But somewhere in that scheduling, we know that department heads and others have a chance to come and speak to us and lobby with us, and we know that if they have an intense disagreement with the county exec's office on something that they want in the budget, they'll come to us. That's good, but I think I heard, and I think it's a good idea, to have some part of the process where department heads have a chance to come to us and tell us what their current vision is, if there's something new, something different, just so we're having a closer linkage to that. And then, I think, so first of all, I want to thank everybody for all the work that went into us. I think, for me, this was really good, and I think the exchange has been really good. And we want to build on all of that and replicate this kind of input from the board, solicit that at least on an annual basis as we go forward. And then Jim's got his light on, Kirk's got his light on, and I want to make sure there's, you guys understand you have feedback for us, specifically if there's some confusion that you have or you seem, you need some more specific clarity from us. So with that, how about Jim and then Kirk?
Thank you, Ms. Chair. I still like the idea of department heads coming in and meeting with us as a board, so we can understand which, how our board members are thinking about the concerns of the department heads. And so I recommend us doing that again. It just made it easier for me to understand where we're all at and where they're at. So just makes sense to me.
Yeah, and when I raised the example of how we used to go through the budget process, I wasn't saying that I was hankering for a return to those days, really, but though, in the context of just this conversation, the capital improvements. I think to the extent that we have requests from different departments, we know the district attorney's office has some thoughts, we know Elections and Recorder Site has some thoughts, we know that Health and Human Services, and so we know that these are out there. I'd like to hear from the department heads, really kind of evaluating their own projects, and yeah, maybe there is a little bit of, you know, mine's better than that guy's project because of the following reasons. But really evaluating their own projects for us based on, we've analyzed the need, we need this many square feet in this part of the county to meet this community, and it's going to cost us this much money. And it's simply to provide our existing services that we're required to provide, or we believe that this is a catalyst project, or it's some hybrid thereof. So really put it back on the department heads to come back before the board and make a presentation to say, this is why I'd like your board to consider funding this, you know, this year, within the next five years, whatever the case may be. And so looking longer term for some more strategic facilities planning to say, we believe based on the growth of the county, we're going to need an additional 10,000 square feet in order to meet the needs of the South Placer County region by 2023, whatever the case may be. I'd like the department heads to be able to start making that case to the board on an annual basis as we review our facilities expenditures.
Jen, then Jack.
Yeah, thank you. I really want to thank all of you and everybody else who helped on this. I think this really did help sort of crystallize the 3D problem in front of us, which is we have all these competing interests, and we don't have enough dollars to bring them all forward. One of the things we didn't get to today that I want to make sure does not get lost in the conversation is financing and going out and, you know, taking a look at which of these makes sense to finance, which of these don't make sense to finance. And I think it's really critically important that we bring, you know, our other elected experts in that field into this conversation, that we not keep it internal either to the CEO's office or the board of supervisors, but really have that conversation comprehensively. I'm going to touch super briefly on a couple of these issues. On the Health and Human Services Office Building, I want to make sure, again, getting back to financing, there at least used to be some federal regulations about ownership versus rental. Let's make sure that we don't step the wrong way and end up having negative economic implications because we own something rather than rent or lease it. I don't know if that's changed, but I think that's really critically important to think Park and Master Trail Plan, not sure why it's in Tier Two, since we are actually in the planning process. Again, getting back to my earlier comment, we need to differentiate between planning processes and infrastructure development. I understand that they all sort of fall under the rubric of capital, but they're really kind of not in some of these instances, so let's make sure we delineate those appropriately. Also, in terms of delineating appropriately, I think we need to look at that Tier Four again and not mix conversations about capital and maintenance. We ask our partners not to mix those, so I think it's really important that we not mix them as well. On the affordable workhouse, workforce housing, I think one of the things that we also need to consider as we move forward to figure out how we finance these things is not just looking at in-loe fees, but, you know, perhaps adopting the Roseville model, which says, thou shalt build it, development community. It seems to be working pretty well for Roseville. I think that's something we seriously need to consider and just require developers to make it part of their project, rather than us taking in-loe fee and then figure out how to do it later. Getting to Jennifer's comments about Burton Creek being on the bubble in terms of a two or three project, I would characterize that differently and say the relocation of the sheriff's substation and the court is on the bubble and should be moved up in tiers rather than moving the Burton Creek down in tiers. They have to go hand in hand. We should start thinking of those as a project, an infrastructure project, rather than two separate infrastructure projects. And then, I'm trying to think what my last but not least was. It slipped my mind, so I'm going to leave you with that. And thank you again for all your efforts in this. I think this is ambitious to bring back with the final budget, but let's try.
Sure.
Yeah, no, I think there's a lot of good ideas that we've talked about today. My biggest concern is to keep any department head discussion on the facilities issue so it doesn't divulge into an overall budget discussion. I certainly don't want to go back to those days. I think the CEO's office has done a good job of streamlining the budgetary discussion, so it's not a marathon, and he's kind of made it more of a hundred-yard dash, which I appreciate, and it's easily digestible. And I think a lot of the issues that people are concerned with, with this initial document, can be resolved as we move through the process. I'm not going to advocate for any of my projects or any of district projects that would be affecting District One today. I think in, as we move forward, there'll be more than enough opportunity to discuss what belongs where, you know, and I think, I look forward to seeing that backup before we have that discussion.
Do you need anything more from us? Anyone up there?
I think we're good.
Good. All right. With that, best part of the day, the meeting is adjourned.